of New Birth Community Baptist Church. If everyone would please silence their cell phones, and if you so choose, please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. The God our Father, Lord, we thank you for this day, the day we've never seen before and a day we shall never see again. Lord, we pray that you will continue to bless this beautiful city. We thank you for our mayor today, oh God, and we thank you for this council and everyone that holds office here in this beautiful city. Lord, we pray that this meeting will go as planned, and Lord, that you will continue to govern the minds of those that are on council and those that are present. Lord, keep our minds on you as we make decisions that will better this city. This we ask in your name, Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, chance, under God, good liberty and justice for all. May I have your call, please?
Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Turner.
Present.
Councilmember Durio.
Present.
Councilmember Getz, absent. Councilmember Thelshaw.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel.
Present.
And Councilmember Neal, absent.
All right, today we have two proclamations and one presentation. First, we have a proclamation recognizing February 20th as National Leadership Day. Accepting will be Dr. Angelique Avery of the T B R I practitioner and coordinator of Southeast Texas Regional T B R I Network, which is, she'll explain.
Can we read the proclamation, Mayor?
Yes, after we read the proclamation, I'm sorry. I got ahead of myself, as I often do.
That's okay. Whereas Maxwell Leadership Enterprise founded National Leadership Day in 2021 to recognize what it means to be a good leader, and whereas the collective efforts, commitment, and leadership of trust-based relational intervention practitioners in our community are at the cornerstone of good leadership, progress, and positive change for effectively addressing the diverse needs and various struggles that contribute to mental health concerns in our city. Whereas in the spirit of collaboration, the Southeast Texas Regional Network was formed as a service and leadership initiative to infinite potential coordinated by Dr. Angelique Avery in partnership with the Karen Purvis Institute of Child Development and with the support of local volunteer T B R I practitioners, including representatives from law enforcement, juvenile probation, school districts, early childhood programs, child welfare agencies, residential facilities, businesses, and other settings that intersect with vulnerable populations. And whereas T B R I practitioners recognize that mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas T B R I practitioners promote the well-being and resilience of citizens in our community as paramount to the strength and vitality of our city. Whereas community-wide implementation of trust-based relational intervention as an outreach-informed method to promote wellness and resilience benefits each business, industry, school, government agency, mental health provider, healthcare provider, faith-based organizations, nonprofit agencies, community stakeholders, and citizens. And whereas in partnership with the Southeast Texas Regional Network, Lamar Institute of Technologies Regional Police Academy, and the Karen Purvis Institute of Child Development, a two-day multidisciplinary T B R I training will be held on February 19th and 20th of 2024 to enhance the use of T B R I across systems and inspire action-oriented solutions for addressing underlying issues that contribute to mental health challenges. Now therefore, Roy West, Mayor of the City of Beaumont, do hereby proclaim February 20th as 2024 as National Leadership Day in Beaumont and recognize and honor the invaluable contributions of T B R I practitioners to the well-being of our community. He calls upon all citizens to join him in expressing his deepest gratitude and appreciation to T B R I practitioners for their unwavering commitment and leadership efforts in our community. Accordingly, the mayor has hereon to set his hand and cause the seal of the City of Beaumont to be affixed on this day, February 20th, 2024.
Please come forward, Dr. Avery.
Keep shaking this. Yes, of course.
I would like to ask all of our practitioners, if they can see that you're doing your picture.
All righty, y'all, and one, two, and three. Get one more, one, two, and three.
On three, one, two, three. Thank you so much. Excellent. Yes, thank you.
Well, it is a true honor and a pleasure to have this opportunity to recognize our trust-based relational intervention practitioners on this day of leadership. And Mayor West, in his leadership role, joined us yesterday for the kickoff of our two-day training. And, you know, there's nothing that beats leadership like showing up. And Mayor, you do such a great job of that, you and all of our council members. So, thank you, I'm honored to accept this proclamation. And I also wanted to share something that really inspired me at our training just this afternoon. I ran over here from the training, and Miles Haynes with the City of Beaumont was part of our training. And leadership is about growing to the next level, not just going to the next level. And I have known Miles for a number of years as an undergraduate social work intern at an agency where I supervised him in his internship. And he has grown to the next level. And in his leadership mindset, came up to me and said that, you know, our city's strategic plan is focused on community-wide mental health. And I see us using T B R I as the framework to move us toward being a trauma-informed city. So, we are so just blessed in this city to have leaders that look at ways and opportunities to take information and really make it impactful across all citizens in our community. And so, I wanted to acknowledge Miles and his leadership for mentioning that, and am pleased to share that we have over 20 T B R I practitioners in our region, most of which I've recommended for scholarships that have been awarded, and would be honored to give a recommendation for our city to also have that opportunity to have T B R I in the workplace. And one of the comments Miles said was that, you know, this doesn't only equip me with improving the workplaces, the places that we work, but also our homes and our community as a whole. So, I just wanted to share that one example. I have had the benefit of not just going to the next level, but growing to this level of service in our community. In my former role of Executive Director of a nonprofit organization, I had the opportunity to serve as an adjunct professor and introduce T B R I as a service learning course in my classrooms. And from there, we started a pilot to implement T B R I with the Beaumont Police Department. We now have two Beaumont police officers who are T B R I practitioners, and we also just have a great wealth of all those people that you saw come up, representing so many different systems that intersect with vulnerable populations. And one of my students who was in my class, one of my first classes of implementing T B R I with the police department, took advantage of the same training that I just mentioned and has grown to that next level and is now the Executive Director of that same organization that I once led. So, it's a really just rewarding place to be in, to have the resources from the Karen Purvis Institute of Child Development, and not only just make our city better, but make our community better across this region. So, thank you so much for allowing me to stand here on behalf of the people that are still back at Lamar, still training, but we had a great representation here today of the agencies that are benefiting from that training and in their homes, the community, and in their workplaces. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Avery. Next, we have a proclamation recognizing March 2nd through the 3rd, 2024, as Beaumont Mural Fest.
Whereas in March 2022, Minday, and I hope I pronounced this right, Muzak and Christina Lowkey started the Beaumont Mural Festival, which involved the support from the Beaumont Convention and Visitors Bureau and the City of Beaumont. The mission was to paint murals around the city that would leave lasting impressions for both visitors and residents to enjoy. Whereas the Beaumont Mural Festival hosts a two-day event along with four days of painting for public viewing as blank walls turn into masterpieces. The event known as Beaumont Mural Festival includes arts and craft activities for kids' own, live entertainment, food trucks, concerts, live painting, and this year, over 8,000 square feet painted on festival sites. Whereas the City of Beaumont will celebrate Beaumont Mural Festival Weekend, which will feature continuous painting, family-friendly activities, and live entertainment for free, thanks to the support from the City of Beaumont. Now therefore, Roy West, Mayor of the City of Beaumont, do hereby proclaim March 2nd and 3rd, 2024, as Beaumont Mural Festival in Beaumont, Texas, and urge all citizens to enjoy the festivities with your families, and let's paint the town. Accordingly, the mayor is hereon to set his hand and cause the seal of the City of Beaumont to be affixed on this day, February 20th, 2024.
Perfect, perfect, thank you.
All right, and accepting will be Minday, Beaumont Business Owner, and Christina
Well, we can't say thank you enough, especially considering each year we don't think we can
Lowkey, Marketing Director with the City of Beaumont. Please come forward.
get bigger and better, and of course, we end up going bigger and better. Huge thank you to the City of Beaumont. Thanks to your support, the festival will go free, so everyone will be able to attend without any cost of getting into the grounds. And as it said, we have 8,000 square feet that's actually going to be painted on festival site. So, you'll be able to not only see 8,000 square feet painted, but we have 10 festival cubes, including three of which kids will actually be able to paint with Inez and Henry Art Smith and an influencer with over 1 million views at My Curly Adventures. So, we are so excited for everything it's going to bring, and a huge thanks goes to Minday.
I just want to personally thank all of y'all for having the vision, the trust, the belief in something that you might not understand. And in year three, I think we're really going to solidify what Mural Fest can do with the talent we have coming and with the city on board. It's going to be something that years and years to come, that everyone in the community can enjoy and make a lasting impact, hopefully in connection with what the city's trying to do in downtown Beaumont.
So, we've included a map that's in front of you. You'll be able to see that there's going to be over 16 additional murals, 10 of which will be downtown. So, that's 10 new murals for our downtown area. And more importantly, on Thursday, February 29th, we will be announcing a surprise location for an additional 600 feet that will be painted as well. So, thank you again.
And lastly, we have a communication update from Lauren Moniz.
Better.
Be a Beaumont Communication Director.
Good afternoon, we're excited to be back with the announcements for the week of February 20th. Thank you to all those that came out and joined us for the Public Information Center for the proposed Hotel and Convention Center project. If you missed the event, no worries, there's still an opportunity to provide input. The renderings shown from the meeting and a survey are up online now at beaumontvision2035.com. The library is still participating in Black Men Read this month, which is a powerful program that changes the lives and learning by exposing kids to powerful stories through positive black role models. Tune into their Facebook page this Friday for the last week of Black History Month. As you just heard, the city's next big event is Mural Fest, which is happening in the first weekend of March. 10 new national and international artists are being brought in to create art all over town with free entertainment and kids' crafts. Be sure to follow, visit Beaumont TX on Facebook for artist reveals, schedule, and all the information. As the weather gets nicer, the Recreation Department has been busy with all kinds of fun community programming. Adult softball registration is currently open until February 22nd, so be sure to sign up your coed or men's team at teamsideline.com/baumont. We also invite you to shoot some hoops and have a ball because the coed youth basketball league registration opens this week. Tryouts for the six-week season will take place on March 23rd with brackets for ages 8 to 13. Contact the Sterling Pruitt Center for more information. The Rec Department is also hosting a coed three-on-three youth basketball tournament April 5th through 6th. Registration ends March 22nd, and you can sign up in person at the Sterling Pruitt Athletic Center. Be sure to stay tuned for more updates about summer camp, summer track, and the annual Easter egg hunt, which will be all coming soon. Thank you.
Thank you. And for those that are here for proclamations and presentations, and you would like to leave, now's the time to do so, and thank you for coming. Now's the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. You may make public comments on the consent agenda or regular agenda items 1 through 9 and items 11 and 12, or on any other topic. Item number 10 has already been heard in public hearing, therefore, citizens cannot speak on this item. The city clerk will call your name when it's your time to speak. When you approach the podium, please say your address, city, and state. You will have three minutes for comments. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up. And as a reminder, we cannot respond to comments during this time.
William Johnson, 1045 Madison, Beaumont, Texas.
Mr. Mayor, Council, my name is William Johnson, 1045 Madison Street, Beaumont, Texas. I have a complaint, complaint is what I want to use. I've been working, I start here like this, 1946, 1946, from 1965 up until 1997. I worked as a law shaman, Golden Triangle, Beaumont area, excuse me. Now, I've been, after so long, if you work here, you have to deal with banks. I started dealing with banks back in 1997, I mean, 1975, to be correct. Now, I have had banks out of my account buy bedroom suits. I get a count, I get two cars. I get one for me and one from somebody else. Three or four banks, I have dealt with doing this. So, I speed this up. On March, this, the first of this year, the first and the eighth of this year, I had about 80 some dollars in my account, but Social Security sent me a letter telling me that my Social Security check was hit the bank on the fourth week in last month, the first and the 24th. Wait a second, first and the 24th of last year, I was supposed to get a Social Security check, direct deposit to my account. I went to the bank, I called some of my debtors and started making plans to pay them. And when I got to the bank, my Social Security check, I never got there. My Social Security department said they put, they directly deposited the check in the bank on the first and the 24th. I goes to the bank and asked the manager or the president, however you want to put it, about the check. She shows me, well, you didn't already, I then to the bank to cash the check. I asked her, could I see a picture of me going in the bank to do this? And when I did that, asked her for a picture, she showed me two copies, where somebody had wrote a check for $700 and one for $900. It was on like the 25th, 24th my check got there, 25th somebody wrote a check for $900, and later on that month, they wrote one for $700. I filed charges with the police department, but I'm here to bring this to you all's attention because I'm seeking help. I came, I worked from 96, from 66 up until 97. I retired because...
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, I'm sorry, we're out of time.
I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Is there a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
There's been a motion and a second for approval of the consented agenda, is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number one?
Thank you, Mayor. Council consider approving an agreement with Half Associates Inc. of Richardson, Texas to develop a master plan for the city's parks, recreation, and open spaces program. And we have received feedback, and we're recommending approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number one?
So moved to approve, second.
There's a motion and a second for approval of item number one, is there any discussion? Councilman Turner?
Mr. Manager, just so the community say, can you kind of explain how, you know, what we got as a council? We started off with roughly, I'm thinking around $130,000 in our parks budget, and it went up to 1.46 million, and what are we looking to do as a council and a community to improve our parks and why this is important?
Yes, Councilmember, prior to me getting here, in the previous budget, there was approximately $1.4 million put into this city's parks budget for projects that are spread across the city. There began to be discussion on those, and as we got here, there was discussion with staff and discussions with the council, and you came up on a final last list of projects to go forward with. And most of those have been implemented, were still implemented. As a matter of fact, we have another agenda item today that relates to those projects from those discussions. But this one was, this was a proposed Parks Comprehensive Plan, where you're looking at a long-term plan for your parks and recreation spaces in the city of Beaumont. It was discussing something that was a final part of the city's strategic plan that was put in place last year by this council and approved by council. So, this furthers that strategic plan, it goes a step further with a plan specifically for our parks and green spaces that are out there. And so, it shows this council's commitment to parks and recreation. You had the dollars for the capital projects that you put in place, but there's further plans into the future, what you would like your parks to look like.
Councilman Getz?
Mr. Manager, I firmly believe that failure to plan is planning to fail. And, you know, for too many years, the city administration, prior to you being here, kind of had a shoot-from-the-hip approach to some of these things that would happen. I think it's important that we have a plan, and I appreciate you bringing this forward for us to consider. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm excited about the city taking the steps to hire a top-tier consulting firm to analyze our parks, recreation, and open spaces. As mentioned by Mr. Williams, the plan is part of the city's strategic plan. Five-year goals from 2023 to 2028. It may take the rest of 2024 for this plan to be completed. As Beaumont continues to work on improving the quality of life for our citizens, a well-developed parks and recreation system is important for the vitality of the city. And at this time, I'd like to call up Matt Buchan with Half Associates to give you some of the company's history and what we can look forward to with this plan.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we're excited to be here today to have this conversation and for the opportunity to work with you on this important planning effort. As Kenneth was saying, Half Associates, as a company, has been around for about 75 years. As a company, we're about 1,500 people, but out of that 1,500 people, we have about 80 planners and landscape architects that have been working pretty much the last 30 years on specifically this topic all across the South. So, we are a Texas-based firm, but pretty much our planners and landscape architects for 30 years have been doing parks planning, parks and trail, planning and design for communities all across Texas. So, kind of what we're slated to do in this process is to really, to set forth that vision, working with the community to understand where they want to go with their park system. We're really excited from our understanding as the city is kind of recommitting itself to the park system. We believe that parks are an essential part of the civic infrastructure, just as important as your streets and your police and fire, and that they need due attention. And I believe the gentleman mentioned that, you know, you've been shooting from the hip for many years. Well, this plan would actually lay out for all of your parks exactly what you should and should not be doing, laying out a vision for each one of those parks, using a framework that we have to call Complete Parks. And it's understanding that if you have a piece of property and you throw a playscape on there, that doesn't mean that you have a park that's serving everybody in the community. We're going to want to work with you all to identify how we can maximize people in those parks for multiple generations, multiple times a day, and understanding that there'll be certain capital investments that you're going to want to do coming after this, but there's also the opportunity to incrementally make improvements over time, and if you have that right blueprint for the future, you're able to make those informed decisions as a council on a step-by-step basis. And so, we're asked to come in and work with you and the community to lay out that vision. That'll, of course, encompass a full needs assessment of the existing park system. It'll include a lot of public engagement, and it'll include an understanding of what the needs are for individual parks as well as the park system as a whole. It'll identify beyond the parks of how do we think a little bit more strategically about trail connectivity. And this isn't a full trails plan, but it will understand that trails do play a critical role in connecting our park system across the community and connecting those other important destinations as part of our civic infrastructure. It'll also include the drafting of a Parkland Dedication and Development Ordinance, something that will allow you to work with your development community as growth comes in the future, and what that looks like, and making sure that your park system grows concurrently with new growth, and in some cases, depending on how we draft it, with redevelopment as well. Well, this plan would actually lay out for all of your parks exactly what you should and should not be doing, laying out a vision for each one of those parks, using a framework that we have to call Complete Parks. And it's understanding that if you have a piece of property and you throw a playscape on there, that doesn't mean that you have a park that's serving everybody in the community. We're going to want to work with you all to identify how we can maximize people in those parks for multiple generations, multiple times a day, and understanding that there'll be certain capital investments that you're going to want to do coming after this, but there's also the opportunity to incrementally make improvements over time. And if you have that right blueprint for the future, you're able to make those informed decisions as a council on a, on a step-by-step basis. And so we're asked to come in and work with you and the community to lay out that vision. That'll, of course, encompass a full needs assessment of the existing park system. It'll include a lot of public engagement and it'll include an understanding of what the needs are for individual parks as well as the park system as a whole. It'll identify beyond the parks of how do we think a little bit more strategically about trail connectivity. And this isn't a full trails plan, but it will understand that trails do play a critical role in connecting our park system across the community and connecting those other important destinations as part of our civic infrastructure. It'll also include the drafting of a Parkland Dedication and Development Ordinance, something that will allow you to work with your development community as growth comes in the future and what that looks like and making sure that your park system grows concurrently with new growth. And in some cases, depending on how we draft it, with redevelopment as well. So Half, as I, as I said, we've been thirty years, but we bring the full spectrum of anything you could possibly think of related to parks. Yes, we do the original planning. Yes, we do full design. Yes, we do construction administration. But because this is one of the core things that we do with our planners and landscape architects, we've also made sure that we hire people that are also have lived and worked in the park systems so that we have a better understanding of how all of these investments lead to your future operations and maintenance and things of that sort. So we're excited to be standing before you today and hopefully embarking on this process. And we think it'll be a good journey as we move forward over the next year.
Thank you, Councilman Turner, and for the time update. Councilman Turner?
Uh, one thing this council has looked at is Parkland fees. You know, with your experience, can you kind of speak to the advantage of utilizing that fee with economic development and things to that magnitude to benefit this community? Can you kind of speak to, you know, the benefit of that?
Sure, absolutely. So Parkland, so Parkland Dedication and Development has, is well-established in Texas and across the country. Currently in Texas, there's seventy-seven communities that utilize Parkland Dedication Fee Framework. Over the years, it has transitioned through many different formations. Lately, as you all know from city council and you're dealing with budgeting, just getting the land doesn't nearly cover the cost of actually getting a park on the ground. So many, many cities over the years have moved to a two-pronged approach. It's the Parkland Dedication side, so you're either getting the property or taking fees in lieu thereof. But then there's also a park development component that works with the development community to help offset some of that cost of new growth versus retroactively taking on new growth and placing on the taxpayer to provide for new park facilities. So we've drafted many of these ordinances over the years. Most recently, I just finished and got adopted, the Colleen one, we finished up last year after working with them on their parks plan. But it's an essential component to make sure that you're getting the money taken in to help grow your system because that's really what we're trying to do.
And I know that this is a very exciting topic that we would love to talk about, but I would like to remind council that it's a posted item for the improvement of the Park Master Plan and we don't want to go too far outside of the scope. Also, this was an item that was bid out and this is one of, although it's the staff's pick, it's just one of three bidders that were actually bid. And I'll remind council that because all the other potential bidders were not invited to speak, we should be cautious in our line of questioning.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All in favor of approving item number one, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number two, please?
Council consider a resolution approving an annual contract for machine shop and repair services with Pimsco Pumps of Rose City for use by the Water Utilities Department. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number two?
Second.
There's a motion and a second for approval of item number two. Is there any discussion? Councilman Durio?
Uh, yeah, I guess, Bart, why is such an increase in the price from last time?
Is that a Mike Harris question?
Okay, Mike Harris.
So in this particular contractor, he is the only contractor that has bid on this contract in the last three years. He did go up on his prices. The reason being, what he told us, he has not had an increase in his rates in three years and he's getting hit with a lot of overhead with, of course, the inflation that he's looking at now. So that's why he actually went up on his prices.
This is something, did we put this out for bid and nobody, is he the only one that bid on it?
The only one to bid on it.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor of approving item number two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number three, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Craftsman Commercial Playgrounds and Water Parks to install one new picnic pavilion at Rogers Park. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number three?
Move to approve.
Is there a second for number, motion number three?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval of item number three. Is there any discussion? Councilman Durio?
I just want, is the same company that did the one at Rogers Park?
Sprout Park.
Me, Sprout Park. Yeah, is it the same one? Is it the same type pavilion, the same deal?
Mr. Keith Olson will come and address that question, Councilmember.
Keith, you still here?
Several more days. Yes, it is the same contractor that did the one at Sprout. It's going to be the same structure, just probably a different color roof on it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Is that it?
Any other questions?
So this is, this is your last meeting?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'll be.
We are going to miss you. If there's no other discussions, all in favor of approving item number three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number four, please?
Council consider a resolution approving the addition of an Axon module from Axon Enterprise, Inc. of Scottsdale, I assume that's Arizona, for use by the police department. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number four?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval for item number four. Any discussion?
I just have a question.
Councilman Sam.
Is it, the difference in this, is this basically dealing with body cams versus the, the way the software for the regular front and unit cams?
This is going to allow the real-time streaming of the body cameras, whereas we already have that for in-car video.
Okay, so now we will have in-car video and they will be able to record each individual officer with the body cam?
Well, so they already have that. This will allow, if, if, for example, officers in a situation, the real-time crime center can actually look at his body camera from the real-time crime center without having to be there on, on scene.
Okay, great. So it's live stream?
Yes.
Any other questions? Thank you. All in favor of approving item number four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number five, please?
Council consider a resolution supporting KCG Development, a proposed housing tax credit, HTC, project located at four fifteen South Eleventh Street, acknowledging that Beaumont has more than twice the state average of units per capita supported by tax credits, affirming that the proposed project affirmatively furthers fair housing, offering expressed support for the project and the commitment of funding in the form of a fee waiver not to exceed five hundred dollars. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number five?
Move to approve.
Is there a second for, or is, there is a motion and a second for item number five? Is, any discussion? Councilman Durio?
Uh, Mr. Boone, we have another deal on the agenda for this also, for another project. What happens if, what are our options here as far as these two projects go?
So, as you may recall, we had a work session a couple of weeks ago and there were three potential applicants. And one of those applicants has withdrawn their application. So before you today are two different applications. One is this one on Eleventh Street, the other is on College, which is the next agenda item. So the options for council today are to take no, no action, which would prohibit really the projects from moving forward at the state level, to support one of the projects or support both of the projects.
Okay. So can we, we can do like a support one and no objection to the other?
You could. I mean, at a minimum, in order for them to be considered, you have to acknowledge the two times number of units per capita in order for them to move forward. You could, you could add more support for a particular project by offering the support as well as the five hundred dollar fee waiver. So in other words, you could add additional points if you wanted to support one over the
Okay.
But again, you, you could support one, both, neither.
All right, Councilman Phil Shaw and Councilman Turner?
So the five hundred dollar waiver, that's not automatic when we vote for a project like this? We have to be very specific and add that as a condition?
So the way the two items are written is basically everything that the developer has asked for, which includes the five hundred dollars is in both.
Okay, I see that. Yes, thank you.
Councilman Turner?
So just to speak to Councilman Durio's concern, i- is it possible that we can vote the way he said, but one without the extra five hundred dollar waiver? I mean, can you kind of explain how that would work, Mr. Boone?
Yes, sir. So if you said, we want to, we want to allow both to move forward at the state process, but we want to give more support for one or both, you could say, okay, we acknowledge the two times per capita, support the application moving forward, but for application A or B, we want to also waive the five hundred dollar fee, which gives them more points at the state level.
Councilman Phil Shaw?
So if we pass both projects, if both projects get the five hundred dollar waiver, a fee waiver, uh, I guess you can't answer that as far as, well, I'm sure you can't answer that. So i- if we, if we favored one over the other, we would need to pull the five hundred dollar waiver with one?
Correct. Yes, sir.
And there's no other points that we can give to one project over the other?
These are the only points that, to my knowledge, we have control, we as a city have control over.
It doesn't necessarily mean, though, that if we pull the waiver on one, it's not going to be passed by the state?
That's correct. As you know, the point system includes a lot of things, amenities, size of rooms, I think, a lot of, a lot of different things that the state puts in that system in order to get the kind of development they want. So if the city council said, you know what, we're going to, we're going to give extra point, we're going to support both to allow them to go forward, but we're going to give extra points to applicant B or A. It doesn't guarantee anything because, again, they may have other deficiencies in their applications or the other application may score higher in other categories.
Can you tell me historically, when we do present two projects to the state, i- is there a, can you, I mean, historically have both passed or historically do they just choose one of the two?
Historically, with the exception of when they had some disaster recovery money, historically, we usually get one project per Region Five Urban, which is where we are located. So typically, usually, well, and I expect this, this year as well, we will only get one of these approved.
Councilman Durio?
So Region Five, that doesn't just include Beaumont, that could have other projects from other areas in Region Five?
It is, it goes beyond Beaumont, but I pulled up this morning, Region Five Urban, the only applications that are showed in the category that I pulled up this morning were these two projects. So sometimes we may see some from Port Arthur or Orange, but these are the only ones I've seen in, in Region Five Urban.
Councilman Getz?
Chris, sometimes I believe, if I understand correctly, the demographic makeup of the census tract in which the project is supposed to go in also can factor into the number of points received. Are these two projects in the same sort of census tract or does one census tract have a better advantage than the other?
I may defer to the developer on that. I do know that over the last several years, several application rounds, the state has tried to direct developments in what are called high-opportunity zones, which have tended to be along the major drive corridor, so higher income areas. But in terms of whether or not those points are in play in this round, I'm not sure.
Another follow-up question. One of these projects is slated to take place where there's other apartments already located behind five hundred. And the, has there been any studies, traffic studies done as to how that might impact that particular area?
No, sir.
Okay. Would that have any impact in any decision that would be made?
That's, again, as we talked about before, traffic impact, although we don't have a study, that could be a consideration for this council as to which project to support or not support based on traffic congestion. But again, we don't, we don't have a specific study for any of these.
Any other questions?
I think I'd like to hear from, from the developer.
Do we have both developers here?
They should be, yes.
Hello, council, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for having me here today. I'm with KCG Development, item number five, the proposed development at four fifteen South Eleventh Street. We've been working with Councilman Durio, talking with the community and doing our due diligence on the site and feel it's very well positioned for a housing tax credit community development. This, this project and this opportunity gives us the potential to redevelop a site that's currently a form, a former church and before that, a car dealership now sits abandoned, vacant and has kind of escalated into a, a area of crime and an area of legal activity here as of late and talking with area businesses adjacent to the site. It's also a site that has some outdated drainage currently and is causing drainage, storm drainage issues for the adjacent users. We've not conducted a traffic study. We have ruled that out as something we needed to do after talking with our engineer and doing a general engineering feasibility study. But we have looked into how we can improve the area drainage and with the upgrades that we'll be able to provide for the site and tie into Storm Drainage Six region, we should be able to help out with our neighbors there and also plan on putting an retention pond on site to help out on that end. Our, our proposal, what would we bring fifty-six apartment units to the site, would be in line with local incomes and, and built to market rate standards. And this is something that we've done routinely across the state of Texas. Our company was last year the eighth-largest affordable housing developer in the country and our main focus is here in the state of Texas. In terms of some of the questions about the scoring, the five hundred dollar fee waiver is a, a fairly critical part of the resolution, as is the balance of what is included in there. Most all of that is, is specific to the state of Texas requirements to obtain the funding. And I'm happy to answer any other questions that you might have about our proposal. Thank you for the time.
Councilman Turner?
Well, just before we even get into that, I don't want to get into any trouble. So with my city attorney, you know, is it, you, I, I see how your demeanor is. Is there anything specific you'd like to advise the council on?
So I'd like to remind council that this was a post-it public hearing that we did several months ago that allowed the public to both comment as well as any developers to comment at that time and have these conversations with council. I know that a lot of stuff has happened since then in terms of neighborhood association meetings and even discussions privately with council members. But the process is in place to make sure it's fair and transparent by the public. I'll remind you that although they get to conversate with you, the public cannot now express their concerns to you in this platform as well. So questions should be limited specifically to decisions, I guess, are directly towards the process, which was kind of explained, that can be answered by staff or not at all. But since we have given this gentleman a chance to speak, you should also make that opportunity available to the other gentleman or the other developer if council is considering supporting one project over the other.
Any other questions at this time? If not, would we, Councilman Getz?
Are any of these proposed apartments going to be market rate or are they all for economically disadvantaged?
They would all be affordable, so we'd have some at the sixty percent rent level and some at the fifty percent rent level and then a handful at the thirty percent rent level. So just given what the market rent is in this area of town, there's, there's not much of a reason to designate any of them market. I would. We'd, we'd expect it would serve the community best by having them 100% affordable.
And are you aware of any pushback that has shown itself from any of the neighbors or surrounding community?
We had some concerned local landlords initially and, and some, some questions that came up, and we actually had a very successful community meeting just last week with Councilman Durio and several members of, of the local community, including a couple that did raise concerns, and by the end of the meeting, I think it's safe to say they were more than open and, and most all excited about the, the proposed development.
And do you have any other projects that your company has developed in Beaumont or Southeast Texas?
We do not have any in Beaumont. We're new to, new to the city here this year. We do have a few in Houston, and we have several more across the large, the state at large, but the closest would be in Houston, very similar to what we're proposing here.
Can you name a couple of those projects in Houston?
Yes, we have one that's ongoing right now called the Westermark, that's down by Sugarland. It's a little bit larger, 165 units. We have a, another one that is stabilized and operational in the Bel Air area of Houston, that's called Belfort Park Apartments. And then we're working on another one on the east side that is called the Strathmore, and that one's in the pre-development stage. And the Belfort Park Apartments, I would note, is similar, and that was a big redevelopment project. This, this one here will be just demolishing the existing building and building apartments, but that was a major renovation in coordination with the city using CDBG funds from Hurricane Harvey, and it was a huge success for the community and the city.
Thank you.
Councilman Durio.
Two questions. Can you explain what you mean when you say 100% affordable?
Yes, so all 56 of the units that we're proposing will be set with rent levels that are affordable for the tenants, and, and that is a term defined by the state as rents that will not be over 30% of their income, and that, that sets the rent level itself. We'll have rents that are affordable for individuals or households making 60%, 50%, or 30% of the area average income. So there's three different rent levels that will be at the property, and they'll be targeting households at or below each of those income bands.
Do you, uh, in your company, have you already purchased the property?
We've not purchased the property. We have it under contract through the end of the year and would plan to close on the property and start construction in November of this year.
All right, Councilman Fellshaw.
Thank you, sir, for coming to the podium, and I do understand correctly that your organization is out of Indiana?
Correct. We are based in Indianapolis, Indiana. Our founder is from the Midwest. About 30% of our staff is also down here in Texas, all, all over the state.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sir, Madam Secretary, Madam City Attorney, excuse me, are you suggesting that we table this here from the other and then have their comments and then go back? Because that's the only, or can we, without making a motion, I'm afraid I'll be violating something.
So there's already a motion and a second on the floor to accept, approve the resolution, so there would need to be an amendment to that resolution, and then a proffer to table, and then you'd have to read the other item, and then there'd be a motion and a second.
I make a motion that we do all that?
Are you wanting the men to table?
Love you so much. Okay, repeat after me. You're gonna make a motion to amend your motion?
I'm gonna make a motion to amend my motion.
And it's gonna be seconded?
Second.
You're gonna follow up and say you make a motion to table this item so that you can hear, read item number six?
I make a motion to table this item to we can read item number six.
All right.
So moved improperly seconded, you don't need to vote on it, you can go straight to.
All right, so Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number six?
Yes, Mayor. Council consider resolution supporting Beaumont PWBLP, a proposed housing tax credit HTC project located west of Widerland Lane Drive, south of 6005 College Street, acknowledging that Beaumont has more than twice the state average of units per capita supported by tax credits, affirming that the proposed project affirmatively furthers for housing, and offering express support for the project and a commitment of funding in the form of a fee waiver not to exceed $500, and that comes with the recommendation of approval.
Okay, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number six. Any discussion? I think that would be the time that we would ask the developer to come up here and make a presentation.
No, 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 we're not gonna make a presentation. We're gonna ask very specific, specific questions, and he is entitled to proffer as much information as the previous gentleman, but no presentation, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Stand corrected.
Good afternoon, Mayor West, council, staff. My name is Kenny Baum, here representing ITEX Group, and we're the developer of this project. Here we go. So I'm here to answer any, any questions that you all may have.
Councilman Turner.
Can you kind of talk about the history of, you know, ITEX, and if y'all have done any projects in this area before in the past?
Sure, we, uh, ITEX is a vertically integrated construction management investment development firm, originally originated out of Port Arthur, Texas. We do have a local office there, we also have a corporate office in Houston. We've done a lot of projects in and around the Beaumont, Port Arthur area, also Orange, Viter, Needlein, Port Neches. A good majority of our, of our profile is in the Golden Triangle area. So this particular project is located, you know, 6005 College Street, just south of one of our other developments, Retreat West Beaumont. We particularly chose that site because we do see a significant need for additional senior housing right there at that site. We have a significant waiting list over at Retreat West Beaumont, so we felt that this was probably the most appropriate property to put into a development. If you all recall, last year, we came to you all with Abiding Grace, which is now under construction. We appreciate you all approving that one. That one was also pretty much a needs-based project where we had Place of Grace just north of it that has a significant waitlist as well, so we were able to, with you all's approval, get that one started, and that one as well underway. So we come to you all with a similar project, essentially an exact replica of Abiding Grace, 61 units, senior housing, about 70% of it is one bedroom, 30% two bedroom. We do have some market rate component in there, because we do feel like there is a need for some market rate there, and so we're, we're just excited to, to put some more senior housing there where we feel like it is much needed. To answer Councilmember Getz's question there about traffic, one of the things that we realized when we approached Retreat West Beaumont was that the city really had, and the neighborhood really had, some concern about access on Wendellin. Another thing was with Kelly High School, we wanted to make sure that, that their needs were met as well. So we made sure when we designed this project, we have a, a pretty big buffer between ourselves and the high school, and we would also be accessing right off of college, so we'll have easement through the property where it is, and we won't have anything, any traffic coming off of Wendellin Drive. So the only thing coming off Wendellin would be an emergency exit, so we can keep traffic coming through that initial project. So if we do, we do own that land, so if we do have anything that develops further, which we, we hadn't planned on, but everything would continue to have access off of college where we think the, wouldn't have as significant of a traffic impact. So hopefully that answered your question, that was a pretty long-winded, long-winded answer there, but if there's anything else, I can.
Councilman Fellshaw.
Yes, sir. Could you qualify the senior housing development? What, what constitutes senior? What age?
Uh, senior would be 55 plus. There's also a, a ability for us to, there, there's also ability for us to raise that, raise that age, age limit if we do choose so, if we do hear from the community or anybody else who wants it to be 62, we would do that as well, but 55 is, is, is what we're at right now.
Well, that number's getting lower and lower.
Thank you, sir. Oh, Councilman Durio.
What, what are the rents? Because I'll be 62 in August.
Okay, okay.
Actually, actually, the whole council.
All right, we're getting, we're getting, we're getting, thank, thank you, sir. I don't think we, I don't think we need that information at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Honestly, I'd be excited about it.
Yes, Councilman Getz.
Mr. Boone, these projects are somewhat different. One is a family project, one is a senior housing development. Is there any identified need in the city of Beaumont for one more than the other?
I don't have statistics on one more than the other. I do know that we've had some conversation with our housing authority in terms of need in general for affordable, and the numbers we got back from the state and their numbers indicated that there, there is a demand. So in terms of senior, I can tell you, last year, when we, when we looked at that more specifically, there was quite a long, long waiting list for senior. And again, as, I think we just, we had some testimony just a minute ago about they still have demand at their senior project. But overall, in terms of demand for affordable, there, there is, there is a demand and a, and a need based on the, the stats that we got from the housing authority.
And what can you tell us about the structure that currently exists where that first project would be located, the building that used to be a church and was formerly kinselled? Is that a dilapidated building, or what's the situation with that building?
It, it's a tired building. It's, or a kinsel, as you mentioned, the auto sales was there, then I think it was a church, maybe office supply, and, and it, it, it is an aging building. I don't, I don't want to imply that it's substandard or anything, we haven't really investigated it, but it is, I believe it's, it's definitely, seems to be a little tired.
Are there, have you had complaints of vagrancy or homelessness, or anything that you're aware of in that building?
I have not, I'm not aware of any. I know that we went to a neighborhood meeting last week, and I heard some of that discussion about calls for service and some complaints from the neighbors, but directly, I have not.
All right, we have a, if there's not any other discussion, I'm gonna move forward, all in favor of approving item number six. Please signify by saying aye.
A clarification, I'm sorry, Mayor, I apologize. We will vote on this one as it's read, and then we'll go back to number five and vote on that one, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Durio.
Um, can we, like you said, can we move, make a motion to move both forward with more being given to one than the other?
You, again, you could say, we want both to go forward, but we like this one more than the other, so we want to, in my opinion, offer the $500 fee waiver, that would offer more support.
And Councilman Samuel.
If there's, unless there's other questions, I'd like to move on item six, that we provide, we move in favor of that, and with a waiver of the 500. That would be my motion.
Okay.
I second that.
All right, all in favor of approving item number six, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried.
I just need to clarify for the record, because the motion originally was made by Councilman Samuel, is that correct?
No.
Okay, so because the motion was originally made by, a motion in the second was made by Councilman Fellshaw, that motion was still on the floor, so.
We need, we need to amend that.
Well, what needs to happen is that Councilman Samuel made a, a offer to amend the motion, and if, if it's not an objection by Councilman Fellshaw, may approach him, then, that he can just say he accepts that amendment, and we can move forward without any additional thing, but it does need to be on the record that he accepts that amendment to his motion.
Well, I have no objection, but the fact is, I moved to approve it as read, which includes the waiver, for I'm not sure that we need him.
This one did not include a waiver.
Yes, it does. Both include the waiver.
I think, I think it both included, but it was, it was specifically stated on the record, so he just wanted, he wanted it to say with the waiver.
Yes, but my motion does include the $500 waiver fee.
That's fine.
So that was my motion, I, I moved to approve it as read.
I'll withdraw the motion that I made subsequent to that.
That's fine.
And your second stands?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, go ahead.
This is for item six.
All, yes, all in favor of approving item number six, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Now, we're going back to item number five. Is there any discussion? Yes, Councilman Samuel.
Discussion, I'm ready for a motion. I'd like to present a motion. I saw move that we, uh.
So we're gonna need to amend the.
That's, that's what I was about to do.
No, we moved to table it, this is a move.
It was, it was, the item is tabled, so you can just make a normal motion.
I moved that we approve item five with the exception of removal of the waiver of the $500 fee.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion on item number five removing, for approval but removing the $500 waiver? All those in favor of approving item number five, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we now have the reading of item number seven?
Council consider resolution authorizing the city manager to award a contract to Bright Star Contracting, Contracting, Inc. of Beaumont for the West Lucas Drive and Gladys Avenue Emergency Storm Sewer Point Repair and CavITY Repair Project, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number seven?
Move to approve.
It's been moved and seconded for item number seven, is there any discussion?
Uh, yes, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Councilman Fellshaw, then Councilman Getz.
Bart, I'm assuming that the, the timeline on completion is still April?
The timeline was for early April. We've actually made up a little bit, we may finish as early as late March at this point, weather permitting.
Thank you, Bart, thank you, Mayor.
That was my question.
Yes, Councilman Turner.
Yeah, Mike, that was one of the topics at the Neighborhood Association, and the information was kind of accurate, what I gave them with the timeline, based upon what Bart said.
All right, if there's no other discussion, all in favor of approving item number seven, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number eight, please?
Council consider a resolution approving the emergency repair of a pump for Lawson's Pump Station, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number eight?
Move to approve.
It's been moved and seconded for approval of item number eight, is there any discussion? All in favor of approving item number eight, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number nine, please?
Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number three, accept maintenance, and authorize found payment to Texas Drainage, Inc. for the fiscal year 23 Citywide Ditching Program Phase 1B, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
All right, is there a motion for item number nine?
Move to approve number nine.
Is there a- Is there a second? There is a motion and a second for approval of item number nine. Is there any discussion? Councilman Duryo, Councilman, then Councilman Turner?
On, this is our ditching program?
Yes, sir.
So this is an update on what specific streets or areas were concluded, concluded in this phase, also has been concluded thus far, and, and where's, what's next in our ditching program?
We finished, with the completion of this phase, we finished twenty percent of wards one through four. The specific areas are all posted on the website with our, our progress update. We have a map on there. To continue forward, we actually did the pre-bid for Phase Two A, which will go back towards two and three. And that should be, I think, awarded next, or bids due next week.
So they have two A, that means they're going to have a two B also, another phase after that?
The plan is to have five phases of twenty percent of each of the wards with the goal to finish a hundred percent of all the ditching across the city within five years of the beginning of the project.
And it says ditching part, project, but that means you're also replacing culverts or resetting them so they have a good grade?
Any culvert that is three inches or more out of grade is replaced and set at grade under this program.
And it's, is what?
Three inches. Three inches or greater out of grade, then, then we replace the culvert and put it at grade.
Does that include ones that's like in people's, under their driveway?
Yes, sir.
And that's at no cost to the citizen, the city takes care of that?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Did you, did you have a question, Councilman Turner?
Just real, just real quick, Bart, with the Citywide Ditching Program, some citizens ask, how do you know what area? Can you kind of explain the importance of the ditching program and how it helps with, you know, sewer and water flow?
Well, the, the ditches citywide, we were, we were behind on really ditching and maintaining those. So having them mopped out to the proper grade level and actually on grade. So this program is first surveying all of the ditches throughout the city to establish what the grade of flow should be, the direction, the level, and whether the culverts are in grade or are out of grade by more than three inches, and then go and, and correct it to where the ditch will run as it's designed to, full capacity again. So after the, the five years are complete, then we'll have gone through and all of the ditches should be, be running at their optimal levels.
Okay, Councilman Samuel?
Would you kind of expand on that just a little bit to make sure everyone understands? We try, attempt to channel the flow to a particular area?
Well, all, all of our drainage within the city is going to go to some outfall. Some of that is DD six, some of that will go to the Nature's River, but this is to ensure that with the open ditching throughout the city, that it drains appropriately to whatever the outfall is in that particular area. As part of this, when we're doing twenty percent of a ward, we're trying to encompass all of a certain drainage basin within the ward, not, you know, hit and miss here and there. So, so that we improve an entire drainage area at one time in the phase.
Am I correct in assuming that, for example, in Ward Three, a part of Ward Three over in the Pine Street area, most of that is channeled to go toward the Nature's River? And then as, and then as you get deeper, further north, it is then channeled to another, in another direction? Am I correct?
We have some areas that are far north in the city that'll go to Pine Island Bayou, but most of our drainage either goes to DD six and through Hildebrandt Bayou out, or it goes to the Nature's River.
Okay, so that's what I wanted to get out to the general public. Part, our major outfalls would be the Nature's River as well as Pine Island Bay, Bayou.
Hildebrandt.
Hildebrandt Bayou.
Pine Island is a very small percentage of, of the whole outfall.
The two majors?
Two majors, Hildebrandt Bayou out and the Nature's River.
And that's design, our design is by the area in which, how do we, how does it determine what goes where?
I, basically, the way the, the land lays kind of determines where we can bring the, the drainage. It's all gravity flow, so with the exception of underpasses. So we have to look at the lay of the land and, and bring it to the appropriate outfall from there.
All right, any other questions? If not, all in favor of approving item number nine, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number ten?
Counsel, consider a request for, for a specific use permit to allow a duplex within the RIS, which is residential, single-family dwelling district, a property located at seven eighty-eight and seven ninety-eight Shell Road. And at a joint public hearing held on January twenty-second, it was approved seven oh with the following conditions. First condition was to install a four-foot wide sidewalk along the property lines abutting Shell Road and Kenneth Avenue. Second condition was the proposed driveways be redesigned or relocated to meet city standards. Third condition is construction plans must meet all requirements by Water Utilities for Water and Sewer, Sewer, Sanitary Sewer Services, excuse me, including any requirements of city backflow, pretreatment, and our fall program. And four, construction plans must meet all fire and building code requirements. And it comes with the recommendation of approval with those conditions.
All right, is there a motion for item number ten?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval on item number ten. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number ten, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, would you please take us to the public hearing?
Yes, Mayor. Counsel, to conduct the public hearing, to consider finding and ratifying the determination of the Public Health Director that public health nuisances exist on the property owned by Gregory Malanson at thirty, three eighty-five Armstrong. And Chris is going to talk about that in Kenneth's absence.
Yes, sir. Mayor and counsel, the city clerk has got some images of this property. Again, the Public Health Department, we also have Justin Jackson, who's here with the Public Health Department to help us out as well, are requesting that counsel deem this property to be a public health nuisance and order that it be cleaned. If it's not cleaned within ten days, then the city can take action to abate the, abate the issue. So again, the city clerk is showing photographs of, recent photographs of what the property looks like.
Okay, the public meeting is now open. Is it, have we had anybody sign up to speak?
Greg Malanson, three eighty-five Armstrong Drive, Bama Texas.
Counsel, I'm here to ask for a ninety-day extension. Those are old photos. I have made progress.
Sir, could you pull your mic down, please, so we can hear? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Sorry about that. Those are old photos. I have been making progress on it. I have health conditions that I had a stroke two years ago and a back injury stemming from two thousand and two. So progress, granted, admittedly is slow. I do have a couple of friends willing to help on the weekends to try and speed this up. I do feel I can have it done within ninety days. And at the end of sixty days, I have a friend, Pastor Roberts, that said he would commit to providing some additional manpower to get it done within the ninety days. So that's what I'm here to ask for.
Okay, we'll let you finish up with your two minutes before. Is it appropriate to be able to ask questions of?
So during the public hearing, it's kind of aggressive. Counsel has questions. If he doesn't eat into his three-minute time period, but that's at counsel's discretion.
And turn it off if the mayor chooses.
Yeah, you can turn it off. Councilman Getz?
Mr. Malanson, you said these are old photos, but they're dated January thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-four. And I've been by your property myself.
Yes, sir.
And I can tell you that the conditions are as bad or worse than they are depicted in these pictures. In fact, what you do is you go out and you find more and more of this stuff to bring onto your property. Why, why do you do that?
You know, I have, have more items at friend's house that asked me to get them from their house. I had three storage units that I had to open or empty at different times. The last one that I did was a fifty-foot storage unit, and I had to empty it within a very day or two. So I didn't have time to really cull through items before bringing them to my property. And that's what I have been doing, culling through them heavily, rather heavily.
Do you understand the impact that bringing all this, all this stuff out onto your property and just keeping it in your front yard is having on your neighbors?
I have considered that, yes, sir. And I've been trying as hard as I can to get it completed.
But yet you keep bringing more and more on there instead of getting rid of it?
Again, those things I had placed at friend's house, not in storage units. And I just got the property in nineteen, I think, and I've been trying to, I want to have all my things in one location.
You have it in one location, all right. It's all in the front yard and backyard of your house. Some of your neighbors have actually decided to move out of the neighborhood because of, because of the condition of your property.
Who you're speaking of, and they had another home, and I believe, that's just speculation, but, growing a queen is what I would say.
All right.
Councilman Samuel?
Yes, I'd like to have staff, if there's been any significant progress.
Justin?
If there's no more questions, Mr. Malanson, you can.
So I used to say good morning, but it's definitely evening now. So I have seen some progress maybe in the front yard as opposed to when I first came in August of two thousand and twenty-three. But I only had permission one time with a warrant to go to the back. So I'm not sure exactly what's all in the back and the side of the house. It looks a little better, but it's definitely not in compliance. And we've only been, as far as environment and health involved since August of two thousand and twenty-three, but this property has been in violation since two thousand and twenty-one.
Previously his mother's property, and she conveyed it over to him because she could not get him to clean it up.
Councilman Turner?
For staff, is this the first extension request, or is this something that's been happening more than once?
This, so this case has been the municipal court before. But again, given the degree and the severity of the condition, we, we felt like it really constituted a public health nuisance. So this is the first time it's been brought to city council, requesting that it be declared a nuisance.
But when you say it's been the court, can you kind of speak to that and explain that?
Justin, I know, I know there have been fines issued at this location. I think maybe he is on a payment plan.
Community service.
Community service, okay.
Councilman Fellshaw, and then Councilman Duryo?
You know, thank you, Mayor. I, this is, as I've stated before, this is probably one of the most distasteful things we do as a council to have to address issues like this. It's very unfortunate. And not to pile on the situation, but to bring perhaps some clarity. I drove by the house yesterday, and there is improvement. But it's in a sense of just organizing what's there as opposed to cleaning it up. The fence has been put up, but the, it's still full of these items. It's just been more organized. And so counsel, just for your sake, as Councilman Getz said, I, I'm not sure when you went by, I went by yesterday, and it's, it's still there. It's just more organized. But the items are, that I saw are still there. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Duryo?
Two questions. When you say community service, is that what he got at municipal court?
So before she answers that, I want to clarify that this, his criminal charges, which were filed under our code enforcement department, is totally separate from our public health issues, which are civil matters. And so honestly, there, even though it's something that we do present to the court, that we, we've tried different avenues when we do take legal action, that we've tried different avenues, it's not something that counsel should consider when making their decision, just the length of time the city has been dealing with it, not necessarily what he's doing on those criminal charges or with those criminal charges. Because I'll, again, kind of stress that him pleading guilty, paying the fine, or pleading not guilty, or whatever happened on his criminal charges, really don't have any impact on the city's ability to declare it a public health nuisance, which is what counsel is looking at today, whether or not the current condition of the property represents a public health nuisance. Once the file is transferred from code enforcement to public health, it is no longer a code enforcement issue. It is strictly whether or not it's creating a danger to public health, which is completely different from somebody having high grass or, or having, you know, a violation. A public health nuisance is a higher condition. So focusing on his criminal charges, I would caution counsel against that and to just focus on whether or not it meets the public health standards.
Councilman Getz and Councilman Samuel?
I wouldn't finish it.
Councilman Duryo?
With all the trash and everything being in the yard, have they been having a problem with rodents? Have they had any neighbors complaining about rodents, or have you seen any when you went out there?
I haven't, I haven't seen any. Just the property owner just says he makes sure he puts out, he puts out stuff to keep rodents from coming, but I haven't personally heard any complaints.
Councilman Getz?
I would like to read into the record a statement from a resident that lives directly across the street, uh, street from Mr. Malanson. This is from Martha Dawn Cowan at three eighty Armstrong, again, directly across the street. I was a resident at three eighty Armstrong Drive, across the street from the residence that has been served a city ordinance violation. I filed a complaint around the first quarter of last year, when they continued to haul trailer loads of junk they picked up off the side of the road and put in their yard. Over the last couple of years, before I filed the complaint, it gradually became worse. They completely filled the backyard up with junk to the point they extended the fence on the right-hand side of their house to the ditch, so they could put more things in the backyard. There has been a pod storage unit in their front yard since they moved there after, after the original owners moved, following a Melda. There was also a broken-down Suburban that after they were served the first citation, they moved to the backyard behind the fence. They have been taken to court twice, to my knowledge, perhaps more since I've moved. Every time they went to court, they came back home and took the truck with the trailer that is always attached to the hitch, and went to gather more junk and brought to the front yard. The front yard and front porch of this house is completely covered. When they sort through the things they bring home and find the things that they feel they can discard, they throw it in the ditch on the right-hand side of their house. When I filed my first complaint, it was as a final result of rats coming into our backyard to eat the bird seed from our bird feeders in our backyard. Keep in mind, there are two schools in our neighborhood, and I'm sure if they're coming into our yard, they're traveling throughout the neighborhood. It became so bad that my fiancee and I bought a house and will be putting the one on Armstrong up for sale as soon as we get it all ready to go on the market. That house has depreciated the property value of our neighborhood, and I'm afraid that what is going, when it goes on the market, I will not get what the house is estimated at because no one will ever want to live across the street from that deplorable situation that continues to get worse every single day. Signed, Martha Dawn Cowan, February nineteenth, twenty-four.
Councilman Samuel? Council, yes, City Manager?
And I don't support this either way, but, but I did get a call, just verifying it. He said Reverend Rogers, Pastor Rogers, said he worked with him. He did give me a call last night to say that he is supporting. He did give me a call last night to say that he is supporting this gentleman. So I wa, I want to make sure it was reflected on the record that Pastor Rogers, J D Rogers did call me last night to say that. Roberts, I'm sorry, but I get Rogers, Roberts, I apologize.
Thank you. Councilman, yes, Councilman Samuel.
So I want to make sure I understand. So at this point, um, the question is whether we will find that this is a public nuisance and we will contract with someone to go out to get the stuff away, is that correct?
That's item number.
Yeah, the public hearing at this point, the next item would be for you to have a finding, uh, to decide on whether you have a finding and ratifying the determination.
Okay, if there were a finding, normally how long would that take in order to, for us to act on that?
So the next step would be for public health to send out an official letter basically to saying that the property has been declared a public health nuisance and giving the property owner or owners a chance to clean up the property by a certain date. At which point, if that didn't happen, then I would send an official legal notice telling them that we plan to file suit by this date. That's kind of like their last ditch effort to do that because when we clean up the property, we do put a lien on the property. If they're able to do that within that timeframe or if significant progress has been made within that timeframe, we withhold from filing the lawsuit. If not, then we go out for bid to, to see what it looks like. We file the lawsuit, attach the bid, go to court. Start to finish, um, on average, it's about ninety days.
Okay, so in essence, right now, he, uh, he would still be, he would still have ninety days to make significant progress to get it out of the status of being a health issue.
Yes, sir. I mean, if he's working on, he, he can continue to work on the property. We typically don't file the lawsuit if there's been significant changes in the condition of the property. If there's some fluctuation in that, like he makes a lot of, uh, a big change and then we see that the property goes back into a bad state, then we file the lawsuit and on the day of the hearing, go out and take additional photos. And it could be that the court, if he made significant changes between the filing of the lawsuit and the day that we have the hearing, the court can also, typically the court will give an additional thirty days, at which point we ask that after that thirty days expired, that he allows the city to go back in if the property has not been cleaned to the standards of the health director. And we've been successful in that.
Okay, so he could, uh, take it out of the position of being a health, uh, uh, issue, but it'd still be a code violation.
No, so typically if, once it's declared a public nuisance, what they're looking for is whether or not the property still creates a public health nuisance. So once declared a public health nuisance, you can't just kind of move a couple of bags around. There has to be a significant change in the condition of the property for it to no longer be a public health nuisance.
So even though he's asking for additional time, he would have that additional time anyway.
There's, I would say that there, that the process allows for additional built in time. So like I said, if council declares it a public health nuisance today, typically the health department will get their letter out by the end of the week or by the next week and that'll start the ten days. At which point he has that time built in, right? So after the conclusion of those ten days, property is re-inspected and they turn the file over to legal. If he's made tremendous change or he's, you know, there, there's notice that there's going to be some people out there helping, it's at the discretion of the health director to allow additional time before they pass that file off to my office. If by the time my office gets the file and we start working it, if they determine, you know, he's in the process of making significant improvement, then we don't have to file the lawsuit right away.
Councilman Getz.
Right, and just to follow up with that, a, as you explained, there is going to be a, an automatic window of time for Mr. Malonzo to do the cleaning of this property. But today, all we're asking is that this be declared a public health nuisance. That's what's before us right now.
So declaring the property a public health nuisance allows for the health director to move forward with some authority.
Thank you, thank you. Councilman Felshaw.
I'm sorry, Mayor, and again, when was this brought to your attention the first time? How long has it been? Either one.
As far as our department, August of two thousand and twenty three.
Okay.
First filed in twenty two.
In twenty two, okay, thank you.
And just for clarity, um, the conditions of the property supports rodent harbors conditions.
Thank you. Yeah, yes, city manager.
I've been told by legal too, we, we should just be talking to Justin about the public health side of it and not to code enforcement. So I'd ask council director questions to Justin.
Okay. All right, are there any other questions? If not, uh, the, uh, the public hearing is now closed. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number eleven, please?
To consider finding and ratifying the determination of the public health director that public health nuisances exists on the property owned by Gregory Malonzo at three eighty five Armstrong. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of this resolution.
Is there a motion for item number eleven?
I move that we, uh, adopt the findings and ratify the determination of the public health director that this, uh, property constitutes a public health nuisance.
Is there a second for approval?
Second.
All right, there is a motion and a second for approval of item number eleven. Is there any more discussion? All in favor of approving item number eleven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number twelve, please?
City council, after conducting a public hearing, consider an ordinance to declare the following fifty one structures to be unsafe structures and order the owners to raze the set structures within ten days. If the property owner fails to comply within ten days, staff is requesting city council authorization to demolish these structures without further notification to the property owner or city council action. Additionally, if the property owner of a structure requesting is authorized by city council to enroll in a work program, all delinquent taxes shall be paid in full or a payment plan shall be established prior to enrollment in the work program. Enrollment, excuse me, enrollment in the work program shall occur within ten days after the effective date of disartenance. Now, do I read all the fifty one?
We're now in the public hearing for the dangerous, uh, structures. Are there any?
You open the public.
Yes, the public hearing is now open for the dangerous structures. And if you would.
Nancy Maxwell, ninety two seventy Glen Lane, Beaumont, Texas, item number one, ten ninety four Amarillo. Number one.
Ten ninety one?
Ten ninety four Amarillo.
One.
Number one. No, that was her address. The home is ten ninety four Amarillo, item number one.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, um, my brother and I inherited this from my father. That's Richard Hartville up there, it was his father's home. And we tried to take care of it and the trees were falling and, and the, uh, we had a little fire on the porch and that's why it, it didn't look good. Somebody had set off some fireworks one, uh, New Year's Eve and the fire department came. We have a buyer and we've had him for a while. We've had health problems and things, but we, we, we called him recently and his phone is, uh, tied up to where you can't leave a message. So yesterday we mailed a letter and he did call the city and say he wants to rebuild it. So if we can't get him, uh, within about a week or so, I guess we'll go ahead and line up another buyer. We would like time, I've heard that we could have about a hundred and eighty days extension to start doing some renovation, possibly start on it while we're getting another buyer if he isn't available.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions? All right, thank you.
Joshua Bryce, fifty seven forty Bigner, Beaumont, Texas, that's item number four.
I'm sorry, Tina, before we go, as for mayor and council, do you want to hear from staff after each one or do you want to hear from staff at the end?
I think after each one.
We can hear after each one.
Okay, okay. Do you want?
I'm sorry, Mr. Do you mind waiting? And Delancey, do you have anything to add, I guess, on that? That just kind of, I guess, keeps it organized so that she's not having to.
This one, um, they actually have never, from the time that we tagged it, they never signed up for any kind of work program or anything. So today is actually the first day we're hearing from them on this one.
You're saying today is the first day?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Joshua, and I think that's Bryce, fifty seven forty Bigner, Beaumont, Texas, item number four, which is fifty seven forty Bigner.
Hello, council, mayor. We have been working on the property itself. It actually doesn't look like that anymore. We have painted it, installed new windows, doors. We also have more flooring going in. So I have an updated photo here if you'd like to see it, but we are asking for a little bit more time. We had quite a few of them and we picked up that were in condition like this and we've been working on them one at a time to bring them back up to code. And we also have a scope of work here from our contractor that we have accepted his quote to finish the rest of it out.
Yeah, Councilman Felshaw.
Not to pry into your personal business, but could you say that you've made a significant investment in this property to try to bring it up to speed?
Yes, sir. So far, we have, uh, put about thirty thousand dollars worth of work into that property itself because the house, the back half of it was sitting on the ground. So we had to lift the entire house up, bring it level, uh, go in and put all new framing throughout the entire house. The only thing that's, uh, old left on the house was the, the existing roof. Everything else is brand new. Now, the siding did age a little bit because it sat out there for about two months before we were able to get the paint and got a new contractor to come out to finish it out.
And you have a picture now?
Yes, sir.
Can you pass it?
You can just pass those over here, Delancey, yes. Thank you.
While doing that, may I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
This appears to be open and accessible. Is it still open and accessible?
So we had somebody steal both our doors. We did put the front door on and we bought a new back door that we have installed. So it is sealed up as of right now.
Okay, and to staff, the question is the same about the last one that came up. Is it still open and accessible?
It was open and accessible when we took those pictures in January. Their permits had expired, so I'm not sure what he's passing around to you, but.
Okay, and the one we just talked about, that one is still open and accessible also? I did, I forgot to ask that.
Yes.
Okay.
Was this a church or residence or?
It was a residence, yes.
Yeah, okay, it just, but it looks like a church at one time, but, uh, thank you.
Any other questions?
Pete, um, so I see that you signed a hundred and fifty day work program and you were given, I guess altogether, like a one year extension. Say why you didn't finish the improvements with, with all that time, it's like a year and three months.
Yes, sir. So the reason we had about four other properties that were like this and when we picked up the package, they were all in a dilapidated state. So we've been working on each one as quickly as we can to bring them all up to code and, uh, better safety standards as well. So this one kind of fell to the very last of all those properties that we had.
Okay, you got some more properties today?
Not like this, no. All of them, we've already fixed up and got the red tag lifted off of them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How much more time you said you was going to need to get it done?
Our contractor estimates, uh, eight to twelve weeks for the completion. So we, we have the funding and accepted the quotes, so we're ready to get started for granting more time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any more comments from?
Delance.
And you can see the pictures as well. Oh, and then, uh, assistant city manager Boone.
Yeah, Mayor, real quick, just, I think for the benefit of the public, just wanted to, I think we didn't do this, cover a couple of basic rules in terms of if council grants additional time. Couple of things need to be in order, that you need to be the owner of the property, that you have ten days to enroll into a work program, again, if council approves it. And then the work program would consist of ninety days to dry, dry the structure in. So in other words, the roof, the door, the walls, the windows, and then a total of a hun, an extra sixty days, a hundred and fifty days to complete the whole project. So again, if, if council were to grant a work program today, that would be the timeline.
Thank you. Any additional comments from staff?
Just to be fair, I've worked with them for, on all of their properties. They will get it done. It's just to the point now that y'all need to give them that extra boot.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's Al, Al, Albany Johnson, five eighty Brockman, Beaumont, Texas, item number six, which is five eighty Brockman. Six. Item number six.
Is it, the page numbers matching what you're saying, but, uh, the thing is not matching.
The, it's, so it's numbered differently. So it'd be, the page, it's on six, but it's, uh, in the list, it's five eighty Brockman is five.
It is.
I think at one point we had fifty and then the next point I saw we had fifty one.
Okay.
I think one got added and it kind of threw the numbering off.
Okay, but it's, I'm just going by Delancey's numbers, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the, the agenda item matches the, uh, page, page number.
Okay, thank you, yes.
Good evening, council members and city manager and all my community members. I'm here with Mr. Allen Johnston as his contractor. He had an opportunity to get this project done, uh, months ago and I made a commitment to him that I would help him, but I had been tired up on many, many other projects. So he and I have sat down, we have had a discussion, he has put a retainer down. And if y'all grant him a hundred and fifty calendar days, he would be the number two, uh, customer, uh, on our project list. We've already gone in, examined his electrical in the house and it's not up to code. It's the two wire system and I have suggested to him that we need to upgrade that to a three wire system. We have a plumber, uh, that's, uh, on standby, come and make the necessary plumbing correction. And then after that, uh, we will just have a little cosmetic work to do inside on the sheetrock and on the floors. And if you'll take a look at the house, you'll find that it is closed in, uh, no one can get in it. So my request is that, uh, y'all afford us the hundred and fifty calendar days and we should get this project done in probably three to four months, ninety to a hundred and twenty days.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Any comments from city staff on five eighty Brockman? No problem.
And number six, paint six.
We'll see. Connie Swinson Ruiz, 304 West Avenue C, Milano, Texas, 2510 College, number seven.
Sorry, the mayor asked if staff had any comments?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
On 580, and it's Mayor Pro Tim, while the mayor takes a break. So I guess the staff have any questions? I'm sorry, does council have any questions, any questions of staff?
Any council, any questions, council of staff?
Stay right there, just tell it.
Do you have anything, please?
No.
Tina, you can proceed.
Thank you.
So again, it's Connie Swinson Ruiz, 304 West Avenue C, Milano, Texas, 2510 College, item number seven? Is that correct? Okay. Give me just a second to pull yours up.
No, seven.
Which one? Okay, you can proceed. You can proceed.
Okay. Hello, and thank you for letting me speak. I've been a resident of Beaumont and the surrounding area for almost 50 years, and I teach at Lamar. I've been there, this is my 48th year as a professor at Lamar. And I wanted to, well, my husband died in 2022 because of COVID combined with asbestos. And he had many positive qualities. However, he was a collector of properties, vehicles, heavy equipment, tools, and all kind of stuff. And so the past two years, really, I guess, the first year, I didn't feel like doing much. And then for the last year and a half, I mean, I have not been sitting on my hands. I have sold three properties, one here in Beaumont, one, some acreage in central Texas, and one out in Hardin County. And I have sold a welding, a welding truck, a flatbed truck, a big pickup duly thing, an airplane that he, he had, a lightweight airplane, I got rid of that, and a Greyhound bus. And so I've really done, you know, I've, I keep going. But there is a contract now on College Street on that property. And so what I need is probably 90 days to close that and let the buyer start doing what the buyer's gonna do to do a business there. And I don't know what his intention is. I have a feeling it's gonna be a restaurant. But, but anyway, I would just like 90 days to get it off my hands. So that's what I'm asking.
All right, any questions? Yes, Councilman Turner?
I see it's a nice amount of taxes owed. Do you plan on, if you sell it, how do you plan on taking it, taking care of it?
Well, when it's sold, then the taxes, we're going through a title company and the, the taxes will be paid out of the proceeds.
Yes, ma'am, I just wanted to confirm that, thank you.
Definitely.
Yes, Councilman Duria?
So if she sells it, what exactly happens to the red tag process?
It really doesn't change. So if, again, if council were to authorize a additional work program, the clock would still be ticking. So if she sold the property to another party, they just need to be aware of that.
So that, that party, whoever she's, the buyer, would have to come up here to pull the permits and things like that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
The one condition I do want y'all to, and her to be aware of is the $17,951.54 in back taxes either has to be paid in full or on a payment plan before she can sign up for the work program and the ne, for the next 10 days. So it can't wait until it settles. Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Corey McGriff, Beaumont, Texas, item number 24, 2306 Lanson. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes, this property is my grandmother's property, and I'm taking over the property. It had a lot of back taxes, and I've, I've paid the taxes down, and I have been doing improvements on the property. And I need more time to complete the project. But the taxes that's old now is like 17, 1800. But when I first started, like, maybe two years ago, it was like around $28,000. And then I have invested, you know, in the lumber and stuff, you know, actually getting the frame stable where I can put the roof on it.
Okay. Any questions? Yes, Councilman Duria?
Yes, sir, you said this was your grandmother's house. Are you the actual owner of the house now?
I'm the owner.
Okay.
Councilman Felschow?
Yes, sir, and it looks like there's some significant damage to the roof. And, and with the back taxes, you feel confident that you'll be able to complete this project, to take it where it needs to be?
Yes, sir, because I, I paid the taxes, you know, it took a considerable amount of money to pay the taxes up. So now I have the taxes to deal with. So I'll be able to put more money into the property.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you paid some of it, but I misunderstood you. I thought there was still some.
No, it was, I was saying, like, when I first started paying the taxes, like, two years ago, when I first enrolled in the program, it was like $27,000. So I have paid, to this time right now, I have paid it down.
You've paid it down to this point, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Turner?
And just to make sure I heard you correctly, you said it was roughly $27,000 when you started, and you're now down to roughly $4,000, correct?
Well, less than that, 17.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's, that's improvement. I just wanted to make sure I heard you correctly.
Thank you, sir.
I think it's Shannon.
Wait, wait.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot about staff reports, forgive me, ma'am.
So on this one, he is not the legal owner. So in order for him to be approved by you, he would have to become the legal owner of the property. It is still in Ellen McGriff's name.
It's still in whose name? I'm sorry.
Ellen McGriff, his grandmother.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can come back.
I don't have the paperwork with me, but the property is in my name. I have, I had the deed switched over to mine.
Okay, so you could provide that to the city? That's already been completed and filed?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, I had to have it filed because I, I enrolled in the, you know, the payment arrangement. And when you do the payment arrangement, you have to have the property in it.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay.
Shannon, and I think that might be Miles, I'm not sure, 1865 Ollie Street, Beaumont, Texas, item number 28, which is 1865 Ollie.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. So I had a contractor who didn't pull the permits. Then he ended up going to prison for 27 years. He killed somebody during the pandemic. Delancey and I kind of communicated, so that's what happened. And so now, Paul Bucksey, as you can see, he started working on it. I spent about $30,000, got that new roof, new AC unit.
And you have a projected date on this?
No, I just met with a contractor last week. And the problem was, because it's red tagged, no contractor wanted to take it. So Paul Bucksey, who used to work for the, work for code enforcement, he came and looked at it and he said, it's, it's fixable, he had no problem with it. So he was going today with the plumber to check things out.
Okay. Any other, any questions? Yes, Councilman Duria?
So what about the, the taxes?
Yeah, so I hadn't paid the taxes because I didn't know how this was gonna work out.
Okay, Wes, they said in order to pull a permit or whatever, you'd have to pay the taxes or set up a.
Right, so if I get the extension, I'll pay the taxes. But if I don't get the extension, I'm not paying the taxes.
Disarrest.
So the, the four 90-day extensions, you asking for those extensions while the guy who was working wasn't working?
So no, I didn't have any extensions when the guy was working. He was working and he never pulled the permits. That's why Delancey red-tagged the house.
Okay, all right. That's all I have.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Okay, so let me clarify on his. So it was red-tagged. We automatically given extensions if we go out and we see that they're making progress. We do 90-day extensions at a time. So he was getting extensions, but then his contractor did not pull a permit. So we issued another red tag, which is called a stop work order. So we issued the stop work order. And then, yes, his contractor did hit somebody and ended up in prison, and he has been looking for somebody else.
Thank you. All right.
Sorry, I'm trying to get numbering right.
That's two.
Okay. Ryan Toleti, 90, I'm sorry? Tolet, 9026 Halcott Lane, Houston, Texas, item number 29, 2272 Pierce. The numbers are all off, I'm sorry, 30, 29, 30. You may proceed, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I originally bought this house, and, oh, man, there was a stack. I even have kind of a couple pictures before these were even taken of the house now. So kind of how that first guy came to court, that's how the inside of it was. Now, I don't know if she has pictures in there of it or not, but there is a new door for the back. In the back, you see how it's down to the frame? So I actually was trying to do whatever I could cleaning up wise and, you know, before pulling the permit and stuff. I actually am insured myself. I own Home Solutions and Trees, and I have a million-dollar insurance policy. And I actually am currently got a bond with Beaumont for the $25,000 to pull the permit. Somehow, I guess, I misunderstood Delancey when she said that when I bought the house that it was red-tagged and it just now got on the list, so you got some time. But I've got five kids, you know, we think that, I've, I figured I only had it a couple months, but I guess I've had it a little longer than that. You know, sometimes you forget track of time whenever you say, well, that happened last week. Well, it was longer than that. So, I mean, I can show you all the pictures now of, you know.
You could pass them to our city secretary.
And it was worse than this whenever I bought it. See the one at the front where it's actually pretty cleaned up? I just need to do some painting and fix that back room, do electrical and a plumbing permit. And I don't know if she took, that one right there where the ceiling fan is, that's where the actual AC unit was, because it has central AC and heat. And the pan had dripped down and it messed up that part of the ceiling part there. But it actually still has ship lap. All these older Beaumont houses are all connected together. And so, but I mean, other than that, I have like 150 sheets of sheet rock. The actual whole front of the house has been leveled out. I just have that back room. And like I said, there's, in the very back of the house, I don't know if she has a picture there or not, there are center blocks and stuff to finish out the backside of the leveling. And whenever I called and I got the letter in the mail in Houston, I called her and she said, well, she was able to access the back. So I did go back there and put in the brand-new door that should be in her pictures also. So nobody can get in and out the house now. When she was able to walk into the house, I had a bunch of leveling jacks, more and more stuff that was stolen out of the house that was actually there to start fixing the house up. So since then, I've put the back door, secured it where no one could get into it at all, and we've actually put more materials in it since then. So I haven't pulled not one permit yet, and I'm actually ready to pull the permit and get started on this. So when I bought this house, I bought three houses, one in Pasadena, one in Orange, and this one. And the Pasadena house, we finished it. The Orange house, we finished it, and this one's on the list. We're getting $30,000, and it's already gonna hit the bank the 22nd to the 27th of this month. So we're ready to rock.
Okay, any questions?
For Mr.? So the pictures of the green grass and the trees, we had, grass was literally as tall as this. And like I said, the inside of the house originally was as bad as the health stuff, and we cleaned all that out. We cut down all the trees, we stump-grinded all the grass, and we currently keep it mowed, and it's pretty nice, you know, for the yard-wise and outside. I mean, some fresh paint, you'll be surprised, it'll come out pretty nice. But we'll have it done pretty quickly. I just need to be able to get my first permit and start. So I needed to get an extension.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
You don't have anything? Okay.
James Godfrey Annie Von Smith, 3680 Scranton, Beaumont, Texas, item number 37, 3695 Scranton.
Hello?
I'm here to ask for more time to work on my house. I paid a guy, which I probably shouldn't have never done, without getting contract to level the house. And he said his family had got sick and he was gonna leave and come back and finish. So I lost that money. So me and my son, the kids in the neighborhood from another neighborhood coming, they busted all the windows. So what I'm working on now, we bolt them up, but they couldn't get into it. And I'm asking for more time to fix it. Me and my son have looked at, we contacted contractors that gonna give us a bid on either finishing, leveling it, or. Rebuilding it from inside out or whatever we have to do, or we gonna have something built on the lane. But we asked it for more time so that we can decide exactly what we're gonna do. We have pictures of the, some houses that we would like to put on the land because both of those houses was involved in the hurricane. Both of them. My husband died. Then after that, I lost my mother, which, that's no excuse. I have to, I have a son home now that's gonna help me to do most of the work. I've done all I can by myself. This home was for my. This home was for my son. And my son gave it to me so that I could get me one built, so I have a better home to live in. But I thank God that the city came in and it fixed the floors and the one that I was in crossed the street. So they told me they couldn't do nothing with that other one because I couldn't have but one. So today, I turned it back over to my son. I gave him back his home. And I'm still standing saying, if I get more time, I'm gonna happen to do whatever we can to prepare it because I don't like junk. I don't like junk and I don't like to live in a bad area. And I don't want nobody else to live in a bad area because of me. So we have different pictures of things that we planning to try to do. If a contract don't give us a good deed, we gonna have something built on that land. Because where that house at, from that house all the way down, the land is mine. So we gonna do something with it, we get it cut. They have someone prepared, take care of the land and everything for us. The man started on the front porch. He jacked up the front and he disappeared on me. And my money gone. And we work it on.
Yes, sir.
I'm still on a mission to get my mom her dream home.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank y'all. Okay, we'll move forward.
Oh, Delancey, you have nothing?
No.
Victor Sanders, thirty-four twenty-five Texas Street, Beaumont, Texas. Thirty-four twenty-five Texas Street, item something.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Item forty-three, I'm sorry, forty-three.
I will say, Mr. Lancy's been working with me for, I don't know, maybe a little over a year. All right, I inherited this house, uh, I think maybe June of twen- ninth, June of twenty-twenty. This was, uh, my homestead when I was coming up. And, uh, I lived there, sisters lived there, and my mom moved out. And I moved back in and I moved to Houston and gave the home back to my mom. And, uh, she got ill. She left and I got ill. I have a defibrillator. I started working on the house, I had heart problems. Contractor was hard to get in touch with. Couldn't really get a lot of work done. I live in Missouri City now, so I was out of work. I wanna say, uh, I think me and Mr. Lancy had a little misunderstanding because the actual permits that I was asked to give and blueprints and floor plans was for new construction. And I believe you said new construction was, you tore down fifty percent of the home, correct?
Hey, this is the one where you tore down the whole front.
Yeah, but it was actually less than fifty percent of the home. So I believe the rules and regulations and codes, you tear down fifty percent of the home, you have to come up with new construction plans. I actually tore down maybe thirty percent of the home because it rotted out. So I had a pictures where I started from and why I couldn't complete the front of the home when I tried to repair it. And then we got, we put the permit on it. I can't remember when, I think in twenty-twenty-two, we put the permit on it. And after we tore the front down, we was trying to repair it, it was too rotten. God bless the troops. It was too rotten, so, uh, we just demoed the whole front by hand. Because as more we pulled down and tried to repair, we found more rotten boards because the house was raining there for like ten, eleven years. So, uh, Mr. Lancy, she come by, the city come by, say, oh, we tore down too much of the house. We knew, we need to go on to new construction, uh, permit and guidelines, which I didn't want to argue the fact at the time because I wasn't financially able, I was sick. And, uh, so whatever she asked me for, I just, the new permit, the new blueprints, the new construction permits, all this, I just gave to her. Again, she worked with me. She, uh, gave me the permits. Again, I can't lie, she worked with me. But we came at a standstill, uh, with the contractor. And, uh, it was more of a friend relationship than a contract relationship because I knew the guy. So anyway, uh, the house, the house is no longer open right now. We, uh, come in, we, uh, closed off all the front part. The back part in the back, we are redoing that. And, uh, basically, I got pictures from where it was before into today. We have seventy, about seventy percent of the plumbing done. About seventy percent of electricity done. Again, we didn't have to run any more wires, we didn't have to run any more plumbing because we just tore down a rotten part of the home and built the, say, we tore down seven hundred square feet, we rebuilt three hundred square feet and just ran all the plumbing and wires back in the same place where they was. So we just took down the old riding structure and added on to the, uh, pride structure, which the pride structure was built in two thousand. And it don't have too much damage to older structure. The first part was built in nineteen fifty-four, I believe, and that's the part that rotted out. So I'm asking for a little more time, like a hundred and fifty days, a hundred and eighty days, to complete it. Again, we completed the front, it's closed there, we got the windows, the doors. We starting on the roof. Again, the plumbing, seventy percent done. Electric, seventy percent done. So I just need a more time. As far as the taxes, I started paying on the taxes again in twenty-twenty when I inherited the house. When it got red-tagged, I wasn't able to afford to pay the taxes and fix the home. So I decided to go in and start fixing the home. So that's why the taxes, uh, I actually went up. I didn't know that was that high, it was like a thirteen thousand, honestly. So as you could tell, the first part was real rotted out, bad off. So I just demoed that part and built, added on a new part. And by fourteen thousand in it, again, I did a lot of the work by myself, the demo. Tore that down with hand, the old part. And we just hauled it off and started over.
Are you in a tax repayment plan?
Excuse me?
Are you in a tax, property tax repayment plan right now?
No, no, no. We just shared, just, uh, she gave me my permits. You know, like I said, I appreciate what she did and we went in and worked. But I still think that it was confusion and it was a stalemate when she said new construction. So we stopped work. We started work for like three, four months. And after we demoed the front, she said we demoed fifty percent of the home. And that if we demo fifty percent of the home, that we have to come up with new construction permits. Again, it was less than fifty percent of the home that we demoed. The home is like twenty-one, twenty-one hundred and seventy square feet at first. We still had standing that back part that we added on to was still fifteen hundred square feet. So technically, that's just like six, seven hundred square feet that we took off the house to add another three hundred square feet on. So the permits that we had to apply for were even the right permits, but we went on and did it anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, to clarify on that, we did not make him apply for a new construction permit. It was an alteration permit. But we, they applied for an alteration permit, we denied it, we stuck to the code compliance. His contractor, we did ask for a floor plan because you are completely changing the floor plan of the house when you take a whole front portion of the house off. So we did ask for floor plans for that because we still have to see where all the electrical and everything go. So we did ask for plans and they did provide them so that we were aware of what was going on with what he had.
Yes, come on up.
I can't print out the, uh, floor plans that she did ask for from new construction. We had to show, uh, the demo that we did and the new construction to add on that we did. Plus, I had to show all the electrical sockets, plumbing and where everything's gonna be. Like we was redoing everything. And I was trying to explain to her that we not really doing no wiring. I know we have to do show the wiring for the new part, but I was telling her that the plumbing and everything was still in place. All we did was tore down the rotten part of the house and built back on it. So far, the plumbing and everything had to bring up the code and electric part, we still, we still don't mind doing it, we still doing it. But I was trying to explain to her that what we was doing was under a new construction code and not a, uh, she called it a...
Alteration.
Alteration code. So that's exactly, you know, that was the confusion. There's also the stalemate because we sent floor plans in, that what we was doing. And then we had to stop and do a whole alteration and send, instead of the alteration plans, we had to send some more floor plans in. And then she just asked me to send, uh, something else and I headed all up. Where I needed a windstorm, like we got all the windstorm done. She asked for another alteration plan. That's why we had to stop again, which I'm not understanding. And we did a floor plan, we stopped that, we did an alteration plan. She stopped us again, so she was stopping us for three months at a time for us to regroup and get everything she needed again. So again, we, uh, went back in to start again, then she stopped us again for alteration plans. By the last time she stopped, I took sick. I just had an emblazon surgery, I had a stroke in September the sixth. So I'm just getting back, I think I talked to her maybe October, November, telling her the situation, asking for another extension that we was, uh, moving forward, that the contract I had, I'm really not using them anymore. I hired somebody else this past month because I paid the guy, got the ticks and all this other stuff, where I paid the guy in November. He came, did have the job, like, right before Christmas, never returned. So I hired somebody else, I took that loss, I hired somebody else to come in and finish completing the job. But again, the pictures I showed is what we had today. But I still think, uh, a lot of the problem was a misunderstanding from me and Mr. Lancy and me and the contractor, which I say she helped me out a lot, gave me the extensions, gave me a chance to do the job. But the alteration plans and the new construction plans and going back and forth with the different plans kept giving us a stalemate where we had to stop work, regroup, get another blueprint, file it. May take a month for her to get back with us, red-tag the house, stop work again. So we've been going through this, but the same plan's been the same plan as I sent in the first time. I never did nothing different. I never altered, altered the plans, I never changed the plans. Every time she asked for something, I sent the exact same floor plans in. So again, I think the alteration plans and the new construction plans, and she explained to myself that it must be new construction plans if I tore down fifty percent of the house. So just because she seen what, she visualized what it was, technically, didn't do the due diligence.
I, I think, right, we're going over the same thing. And, uh, so, thank you.
All right.
I think that's Jesus Cruz, eleven twenty-five Roberts Street, Beaumont, Texas. He's speaking on item number forty-eight, twenty-two ninety-six, Victoria.
Hi.
Forty-nine.
I mean, whatever.
If you can translate, you're good.
Okay. Hi, I'm just translating for Jesus here. And basically, he purchased this house with the intention of renovating it to code. And as you guys could see, he's paid taxes. He's already worked on the foundation. He just wants more time to, to bring this to code and to make it look nice. I was talking to him earlier and he's thinking that he'll need around three hundred days to finish everything one hundred percent. He could finish the outside in ninety days, but the inside is still gonna require work due to electrical and plumbing. But like I said, he has been working on it and his taxes are up to date. And he's here with the best intent moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I don't have anything.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Yes, the public hearing is now closed. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number twelve, please?
After the public hearing, consider an ordinance to declare the fifty-one structures to be unsafe structures in order to owners to raze the structures within ten days. If the property owner fails to comply within ten days, staff is requesting city council authorization to demolish these structures without further notification to the property owner or city council action. Additionally, if the property owner obstructs a request and is authorized by a city council to enroll in a work program, all delinquent taxes shall be paid in full or payment plan should be established prior to enrollment in the work program. Enrollment in the work program shall occur within ten days after the effective date of disartenance. And that's council's options.
Mayor, before we make a motion or before there's a motion made on this, I want to recap for council that you had individuals come and speak. And I think staff said one of them was not a property owner. Do you recall what number that was?
Is that Home Solutions, number twenty-nine?
Number thirty.
Okay.
Corey McGriff, yeah.
Oh, McGriff, okay.
Yeah, so you had property located twenty-five ninety-five Amarillo, property at fifty-seven forty Bigner, property at five eighty Brockman, property at twenty-five ten College, and she was not asking to be in the work program. She was asking for time to sell. Property at twenty-three oh-six Linton.
Can you give the numbers as well to those?
Okay, so I believe that property one, I'm sorry, twenty-five ninety-five Amarillo was number one. Fifty-seven forty Bigner was number four. Fifty eighty Brockman was number five. Twenty-five ten College was number seven. Twenty-three oh-six Linton was number twenty-four. I don't have a twenty-five on my paper, did I miss that one?
Corey McGriff, twenty-four, and then we moved the...
Linton, okay, okay. And then thirty, property at twenty-two seventy-two Pierce is number thirty. Property at thirty-six ninety-five Scranton is thirty-seven. Property at forty-three thirty-four twenty-five Texas is forty-three. And the property at twenty-two ninety-six Victoria is forty-nine. Those individuals all spoke to you today with the exception of property located at number, property number seven, located twenty-five ten College. She was requesting time to sell. Everyone else requested addition, to be added to the work program or requested additional time. Property fifty-one that is listed in the ordinance but is not listed in the staff report needs to be pulled because it was not properly posted, so it should not be considered in any motion.
Do you have a number twenty-eight, eighteen sixty-five, Ollie?
Yeah, that's what I, she missed that one.
Did I miss number?
Twenty-eight, eighteen sixty-five.
Oh, so that's what I was saying, so it's twenty-nine, so it's eighteen sixty-five. Is it Charlie?
Ollie.
Ollie.
Ollie, okay.
So I had one, four, five, seven, twenty-four, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty-seven, forty-three, forty-nine.
And that's what I'm saying, I think that was the property, the one you said that was not a property owner. So is that correct? That was the one who was not a property owner? Okay, so that's property twenty-four. So you might want to make sure that is a part of any motion that's made for consideration for that one, that that property owner or that individual be able to show that he's a property owner because only property owners can enter into work programs.
So we have to exclude that one?
You don't have to exclude it, but it needs to be as a part of your motion if you're gonna consider them for a work program, that they need to show proof of that so that it's not automatic for them. We don't want them to be able to bypass the rules.
So number twenty-four would be with condition?
Number twenty-four would be with conditions. All of them who have back taxes would obviously be with that condition, but you're adding that additional stipulation to twenty-four that they show that they're a property owner.
Okay.
Yes, Councilman Turner?
So the conditions can be back taxes, but I just want to make sure the gentleman has his paperwork to verify that he's the owner, he has the opportunity to present it.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. What, number one, what was the address for that one?
Uh, twenty-five ninety-five Amarillo.
Okay, that one's ten ninety-four.
Ninety-four. So correction to that one, ten ninety-four Amarillo. But it was... But it was property one.
So we have, uh, had the reading of number twelve. Is there a motion? There are twelve, there are ten properties. With the appropriate conditions, is there a motion for the? Councilman Getz? Turned your mic on, okay.
I'll make the motion. I move the, that we approve, this is item number.
Twelve.
Oh, item number twelve, excluding number one, ten ninety-four Amarillo, number four, fifty-seven forty Bigner. Number five, five eighty Brockman, number seven, twenty-five ten College. Number twenty-four, twenty-three oh six Linton, with the condition that he shows proof of ownership. Number twenty-eight, eighteen sixty-five Ollie. Number twenty-nine, twenty-two seventy-two Pierce, number thirty-seven, thirty-six ninety-five Scranton. Number forty-three, thirty-four twenty-five Texas, number forty-nine, twenty-two ninety-six Victoria.
Uh, Councilman, can you amend that twenty-two seventy-two to be item thirty, not twenty-nine?
Did I say twenty-nine? Twenty-two seventy-two Pierce?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah, item thirty.
For thirty and not twenty-nine.
And then could you also add to your motion that all back taxes be paid as a condition of the work program?
Yes, and all with condition that all back taxes be paid with the work.
Fifty-one be eliminated.
Fifty-one eliminated. Thank you, City.
Alright, uh, it has been moved by Councilman Felshaw.
Second.
It has been seconded by Councilman Getz. Is there, uh, there is a motion in the second. Is there for item number twelve, is there any discussion? Yes, Councilman Duryo.
Yeah, I just wanted to check with, uh, Chris Boone. Some of the, uh, properties on this list are commercial properties. The ones that's gonna, not, not the ones that the folks came and spoke, but the ones that they didn't. And, uh, just want to make sure those properties, if we, um. Demolish them, then there'll be a lien put on those commercial properties for the price of demolition.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Alright, all those in favor of approving item number twelve is read by? City Manager Williams and Councilman Felshaw. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, will you take us into the work session, please?
Yes, Mayor, work session. Update regarding the city sewer system. We've had a lot of attention on our city sewer system and, uh. The mayor requested a, a future agenda item. So today we have that agenda item that was requested a meeting or two ago. So today Mike Harris is here to do a presentation on the city of Beaumont sewer system.
One thing I want to say before we start. A while back, Councilman Duryo asked me to come speak at, uh. Association meeting. He told me fifteen, twenty minutes. A little over an hour later, I finished my first page of notes. So I'll try not to get carried away. I know it's been a long day. Uh, to start with, I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for the opportunity to come and speak on the wastewater system. And also be able to share the challenges that we face and the progress that we've made to make Beaumont a better place. Uh, start with a little bit about our, um, collection system. We have seven hundred and forty-five point six miles of sewer main in our system. Uh, these manages, these mains range from size six inch to seventy-two inch. Uh, just kind of put that in perspective of the seven hundred and forty-five miles. If we put it together as one continuous pipe, it would stretch across the state of Texas from here to El Paso. So that just give you an idea of how much piping we have in, in the city. Uh, we have ten thousand two hundred and seventy-two, uh, manholes within the system. Uh, these manholes are made out of precast concrete. They're made out of fiberglass and the older ones are made out of brick. Uh, we have forty-three thousand plus sewer taps and seventy-seven lift stations. Uh, this is all maintained by three repair crews, four flush trucks, two bike, pipe bursting crews. And one crew that does televising and manhole rehab. For a total of thirty-eight full-time employees and temp employees together. Our lift, lift station department on the seventy-seven lift stations, we have ten full-time employees. And just to let you know how busy we are, in the last ninety days, these employees have closed out. Eight hundred and seven sewer requests and eight hundred and ninety sewer work orders in the last ninety days. A little bit about our wastewater treatment plant. It's a trickling filter plant design. It was built in the early nineteen fifties. Uh, the plant is permitted through T C Q for forty-six million gallons a day. And on average day, we treat anywhere from about fifteen to twenty-two million gallons. Um, we also have an in-house lab that is on site, uh, to monitor the required parameters. To keep us in compliance with T C Q. And also part of our wastewater treatment plant is a six hundred acre constructed wetlands known as cattail marsh. Uh, the cattail marsh, this is our final step in ammonia removal before discharging into the downfall channel.
Mike, can we ask questions as we go? Uh, go back to the, the filter plant built in the nineteen fifties. At what point does our system become adequate? It's outdated and?
The thing with the, the wastewater plant, it's old technology. Uh, the majority of the sewer plants, I'm not saying all of them. Majority of the sewer plants that are built nowadays are an activated sludge, uh, plant, which is a different treatment process. Uh, the thing about our sewer plant, it works and it works good.
So this doesn't put us at a disadvantage?
No, sir.
Thank you.
No, sir. Uh, the, the disadvantage that we do run into with our sewer plant is finding the operators that know how to run. A trickle filter plant because being so, you know, so old of a plant. That nowadays activated sludge is more taught rather than the trickle filter system. So that's kind of the challenge we run in. But as far as the plant itself being a trickle and filter plant, no, the plant works very well. So.
What's the difference between trickle filter and activated sludge?
Uh, if you see in the picture, you can see the, uh, large round structures. Uh, basically after that goes through the treatment process, uh, through separating the, uh, sludge or your solids. Through the, um, digesters, then your water goes through with your bacteria. And it trickles through a rock media that actually grow bacteria. And this bacteria helps break down the, uh, B O D or the, the bad bacteria that's within the wastewater. And as it trickles through the, the media, uh, then it goes through the rest of the clarification and chlorinating process. For activated sludge, it just goes in, it, uh, feeds the bacteria into one chamber. And then squeezes it out into a sludge type and then it's hauled off.
Councilman Felshaw?
Mike, uh, so I'm assuming we're, we're raising up a new generation of men that know how, uh, people that know how to operate this ourselves. Because the schools aren't putting them out, so we have to.
Correct.
And then number two, or is there ever a time when we're going to be faced with, uh, as a city? Of having to address this issue and update to the newer technology or will this continue to serve us?
This will continue to serve. Um, I believe in, if the number's correct. I believe when you get about three quarters, uh, percent, I mean, seventy-five percent of your capacity. That you're, uh, uh, permitted for, once you reach that with T C Q. Then you need to start making plans on either expanding the plant, building a larger plant. Uh, such as that, which we're at fifteen, twenty million gallons. So we're still at fifty percent capacity. So. But we do a lot of updating, uh, last couple of years. If you remember, we've replaced a lot of the raw sewage pumps in the, in the raw sewage building. So like I said, there, then there's things, there are changes that we make. And like I said, we can get into a little, little later in, in the program that, uh, we do to update the system. But as far as the treatment plant as a whole, it, like I said, it works great.
Thank you.
A little bit about our sanitary sewer mains. Uh, if you look in the picture here on the darker blue. Uh, that is PVC pipe or polyvinyl chloride. That's our regular common plastic pipe that we put in. And the green is a H D P E pipe, which is also high density polyethylene pipe. Uh, that's the pipe that you see normally we use for pipe bursting. Uh, it's heat fused together to make one continuous run and we're able to pull it in through the ground without separation. So with that being said, you know, we got sixty point six percent of our system that's either PVC or poly pipe. Uh, the problems that we run into or the thing we run into is the thirty-one point three percent of concrete lines. Uh, this thirty-one, uh, this concrete lines, that's the areas that we go after when we start doing the Cameron. We start doing smoke testing, uh, things of that nature. Uh, what happened is over time, the sewer gas that's within side of the, um, sewer mains. It actually deteriorates the top and the inside of the sewer pipe. And then after, after it reaches life expectancy, the top basically just collapse, gives away, uh, to the ground. And that's usually caused a lot of your, your problems with the, uh, cavities and things of that form and, and also the inflow infiltration. Uh, with that being said, excuse me. I get dry when I'm talking. With that being said, you know, at the thirty-one point three percent. Uh, when you put that into the amount of pipe we have in our system. Uh, we got two hundred and thirty-three miles of concrete lines within our system. Um, of course, the five point nine percent, uh, it's the purple. It indicates that pipe that's unknown. Or in other words, we don't have records to show exactly what the material was when they installed the pipe. Uh, chances are it's pretty good that, uh, this is older pipe that they didn't keep records of. It's probably going to be cast iron or concrete as well. And then of course, the last, the two point two percent, uh, that's other tight pipe, uh, the clay, spiralite, Gifford heel. Ductile iron or cast iron pipe. Uh, out of this two point two percent, we go through and we chase the, uh, clay pipe as far as replacement. Usually doesn't see a lot of the problems with the other pipes. Next slide. So where does the problem come from when we get heavy rains? I know there's been times that we've talked, spoke about inflow and infiltration or I N I. Uh, just to let you know, uh, a little bit about what I N I is. Uh, inflow is storm water that quickly gets into the sewer mains. And of course infiltration is groundwater that seeps in the pipes. And added in the slide here, it showed you some of the areas that we can actually get. We do get the inflow and infiltration from, uh, storm cross connections, uh, broken or cracked pipes. Uh, uncapped, uh, cleanouts. You know, the citizens have an uncapped cleanout. We get a lot of rain, the yard floods, that water goes right straight in our system. Uh, we have been able to find a few roof drains that are connected or French drains connected to the service system. So like I said, these are all areas where we actually see the, uh, inflow and infiltration in our pipe. Yes.
It looks like some of these are situations that are on the citizen's side of the meter.
Yes, sir.
And, and of course, when that happens, uh, of course, the citizen might be understandably upset that they can't flush their toilet. But it's not necessarily, necessarily the city's responsibility to, uh, fix those things that occur on the citizen's side of the meter, is it?
No, sir, that's correct. Uh, the city, actually, we are responsible for the service tap, which is made on the main. And up to the property line. And then after that, it's the citizen's responsibility. Uh, with that being said, uh, the EPA had, did put out a report a little while back. That said forty percent of all the I N I in a sewer system comes from the customer service lines. So.
And I know no citizen wants to hear that because if they have a problem, they, you know, they'd like the cities to come out and fix the problem. But the reality is, a lot of the times, it's not the city's issue. The storm cross connection, what, elaborate on that a little bit? What are we looking at there?
Uh, okay, back in, uh, the fifties, uh, before the sewer plant was built. Uh, the actual sanitary sewer and the storm, uh, water system was connected, interconnected. Uh, basically the sewer all went out and dumped into the river. And then after the sewer plant was built, yeah, exactly. After the sewer plant was built, and of course with EPA regulations, including drinking water acts. Then, uh, you know, the city had to come in and separate the storm sewer from sanitary sewer. Uh, I don't remember, I've heard a number before, exactly how many connections they were. Uh, we do on occasion find a connection, uh, every now and again, that had been missed and we're able to separate it.
So when you have one of these situations occur, you got storm water from rain just going straight into the sewer system?
Yes, sir.
And when you find them, what actions does your department take to try to alleviate that?
Oh, well, first thing, you know, we definitely, we, we open it up and disconnect the cross connect. And repair the sewer main and also, you know, get with the street department and they come and take care of their, their storm drain as well.
How, how many do you think situations like that are still here in Beaumont?
Um, I can think of probably about fifteen to twenty that we've run across in the last three years, three to five years. So like I said, they're, they're out there. So. Uh, some of the other areas that you get into as far as your storm cross connects. If you have a broken storm sewer next to a broken sewer main, uh, they will cross connect as well.
Mike?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a plan in place to, uh, replace those concrete pipes or you just replace them as they break?
No, sir, we gotta have a plan.
We do?
We do. And we'll get to that as we, as we go along. Yes, sir. Alright, some of the things that we see, the common issues we face that we see out in the field, uh, areas of I N I. Of course, we talked about the brick manholes. Uh, you can see in this one brick manhole where the, uh, the service laterals were just pushed in and nothing sealed around it. And of course, as rainwater builds up around the manhole, it's going to run right straight down into the manhole. Uh, this other manhole is a broken one that was on a D D six ditch. You could see considerable sized hole in the side of the manhole. Uh, once the D D six ditch starts filling up and gets high enough, it just dumps right straight into the manhole. And right into our system. Uh, the other manhole was an, a, a manhole that was broken near just a regular drain ditch. And of course, like I said, you can see the size of the hole that water just runs pours into it. So. And a few more others, uh, sewer main failures. Uh, this was actually a cavity and a collapse that was out by, uh, Stone Lee Apartments off of Major Drive that we repaired. A couple of years back. And you can see exactly how much of the, um, the ground has actually sunk and fell in. And deteriorated manholes and also the broken manhole connections. Uh, you can see on that picture exactly how the cavities form and how the water just washes the dirt right straight into the system. Alright, some of the things we do to, to combat the, uh. The problems in, in the, uh, aging infrastructure that we see, uh, pipe bursting. And, uh, of course, you can see it's a trenchless repair method that breaks and expands existing buried lines. While simultaneously replacing it with the high density polyethylene pipe. Uh, the pipe bursting we do is done by contractors as well as being done in-house crews. Uh, in fiscal year twenty-three, we replaced fifty-two thousand three hundred and ninety-six feet of sewer main using this method. Uh, smoke testing, of course, is injecting a non-toxic artificial smoke into the sewer lines. Uh, which then escapes through any leaks or cracks or joints. Uh, it's done by contractor and in-house crews also. It says we have recently increased our smoke testing in-house. We have seven projects, uh, seven projected areas scheduled. And we will begin smoke testing the first areas early this week and that'll be done in-house. Uh, dye testing, uh, dye testing is, uh, we pour a non-staining water soluble dye. Uh, usually in a cavity or a suspected sewer break. And of course, we open the manhole or the, uh, sewer line to deserve and see if we see any of the dye coming through. Um, this is mainly done in-house. Uh, last year we did about one thousand four hundred and forty nine feet of dye testing. Uh, cleaning and televising, that's another method that we use. Uh, basically it takes a closed circuit TV camera. We either push or pull through the sewer mains and it records the condition of the mains and also shows any problems that we run into. Uh, these particular pictures here, I put in there because if you see on the one, on the left, the pipe is actually unjointed and out of alignment. And the one on the right's actually have roots growing down into the sewer main. Okay, I, I put included this map in here and I have another map on the bottom half in the next slide. But for this one to start with, uh, Councilman Turner had asked a couple of weeks ago if we track all the sewer problems as they come in. And we do track them, uh, through heat maps. And we do have other areas that we track it, but mainly this heat map here. This is generated off of the sewer complaints or calls that we get in. Um, not only is it generated off of the location of the calls, but also the frequen- frequency of the calls. Uh, you can see in this map the areas that's highlighted in the pink and the red and the yellow. Of course, the yellow is probably more calls or more frequent calls, uh, than some of the lighter shades of pink. And, uh, we labeled the areas here on kind of where we're at. And what we're looking at is, is a lot of the issue, issue area, problem areas. Of course, you can see also in the legend on it that, um, we have work scheduled for around these areas. Uh, one thing that I wanted to bring up that in the presentation. Um, I know we got areas and we have certain addresses that call a lot, call frequently with having backups when it rains. Okay, um, the thing you gotta remember, we have major truck lines that run throughout the city. Okay, once these trunk lines fill, uh, they start backing up into the neighborhoods. So if you have an address that, you know, it starts backing up, the truck line starts backing up. You have a certain address, that whole neighborhood may be pipe burst, maybe sealed, maybe in good shape. But yet it may be three neighborhoods upstream where all the inflow and infiltration is getting into you. That's causing the backup in that one neighborhood. Uh, it basically all goes off of elevations. You know, water's going to seek its own level. So if one neighborhood's lower than another neighborhood, though they're not having problems for say with inflow. Yet they're going to get the problems as far as the backups and, and not be able to flush. Uh, prime example of this, and, and I know we've talked about it before, King, Kingswood addition. Uh, we do have a lot of backups at the Kingswood addition. Uh, if you notice up at the top above Kingswood addition in the yellow. Uh, we have slated for this year about seven thousand feet of smoke testing to do in that area. Uh, all that area feeds into the Kingwood addition. So we're working on the, uh, inflow, uh, and the infiltration up in the area above Kingswood to try to slow the inflow down. Before it gets into Kingswood. Yes, sir.
Uh, before we get too far with the red and pink, is it safe to say that that area is some are heavy cement? Uh, older piping or is that some of the area that we've been doing a lot of pipe bursting in as well?
It's a lot of areas we've already done pipe bursting in. But the red and the pink does not necessarily mean that that particular neighborhood itself has old concrete lines. Uh, that, that means that that neighborhood itself is what's surcharging, what's filling up, which is causing, yeah, not able to flush. Um, like I said, that's where we talked about Kingswood addition. Uh, Kingswood additions, it's a pretty new subdivision. But yet they feel the brunt of the surcharging because, you know, the addition is a little bit lower than the other ones. So of course, that's where the water, uh, fills up first.
So, so what's the answer to this issue when you have, you know, nearby neighborhoods that are filling up first? What, what, you, you know, whether it be Amelia or Kingswood addition? You know, when you have all the pipe bursting throughout the neighborhood done, but you've got an adjacent neighborhood where it's filling up. How do you fix this?
Well, that's what we, and that's what we do, Councilman Getz. We look through our sewer evalu- evaluation programs. Uh, we go through, we smoke test, we camera the other neighborhoods. Uh, we do flow monitoring to determine which direction the flow is coming from or the heavier flows coming from. So we know which direction to go out and start seeking the inflow and infiltration. Then we can get these on a pipe bursting schedule and get it changed out. Uh, the thing is, the more concrete lines or the more pipe bursting we do and the more lines we change out. That's less water getting into the system. So by changing out pipe bursts in the areas around King, Kingswood addition. We're actually slowing the inflow down getting into that line.
Wha- what additional lift stations throughout the system make a difference?
The problem with adding additional lift stations in, uh, especially in this area right here. It's so far north that the, you would have to run a force main or a single, uh, force main that discharges from the lift station. Pretty much straight to the sewer plant, all the way on the south end of town. Um, everything that's on that west end, all the way up to north where the Park Meadow, Park North Meadow View. All of that area goes to the Terrell Park Lift Station. So by discharging it to any other line without going straight to the sewer plant. You're just overloading, you're still just pushing into the same lift station. But, uh, now one of the other things to, to point out with this, the Folsom Crow Road you see there. Uh, you can see that we've got a lot of, pretty much a lot of calls there because it's in yellow. And you can see how much, uh, closed circuit TV we're doing, pipe bursting we're doing in that area. Kingswood addition also runs through that area right there as well. So like I said, we're looking at also closing up areas there. And of course, this is a same map just on the south end part. Um, like I said, same areas, you can see Amelia area, we have work scheduled for there. Uh, I know that there's been a lot of, um, issues over on South Seventh Street. Um, if you notice the Roberts, the avenues, you can see how much work we've got scheduled for that area right there. This will definitely help relieve some of the problems that's over on South Seventh. Uh, mainly the South Seventh line goes to a, a larger, like a twenty inch trunk line that's on Roberts. Well, all the other neighborhood nearby the avenues that's highlighted, uh, that goes in that same trunk line. So once that trunk line fills up, of course, there goes the issue of surcharging. So when we, you know, for us being able to get in there, get this pipe burst, get it taken care of. That's closing the system up, that's keeping the rainwater out of the system. Just a little of the work we done last year, uh, with contractors. Uh, we did forty three thousand, eight hundred and twelve linear feet of pipe replaced through pipe bursting. Uh, we've replaced two hundred and one manholes. Uh, we renewed five hundred and ninety four service taps. Uh, we were able to, uh, clean and televise eighteen thousand, three hundred and sixty two, uh, feet of sewer main. And also ten thousand, four hundred and fifty five feet of smoke testing. Like I said, that was done in fiscal year twenty three. Uh, our in-house crews, we did eight hundred, I mean, excuse me, eight thousand, five hundred and eighty four feet of pipe bursting. Twenty-two manholes we rehabbed or replaced. Uh, we did two hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and sixteen feet of sewer mains flushed. Uh, that's where we go through, flush the lines, clean them, make sure they're under optimal flow. Uh, we televised two thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight feet. And we also did one thousand, four hundred and forty-nine feet of dye testing. Like I said, that was done with our in-house crews. Uh, currently what we're working on this year are the projects that are currently underway. Uh, the sewer evaluation phase four. Uh, the estimated completion date on this is, uh, the first part of April. Uh, this project basically consists of smoke testing and televi- cleaning, televising as throughout the city or citywide program. Uh, there's been five work orders submitted and the contractor's working on the last work order now. Um, the SSOI pipe bursting, uh, it's also called, uh, citywide pipe bursting. Uh, what the SSOI, what that is, is sanitary sewer overflow initiative. It's an agreement that we go into with TCEQ. Um, we're, we, we go into this agreement with TCEQ. And we're under obligation that there's certain areas that have a lot of overflows. And like I said, we obligate ourselves with TCEQ to fix, uh, so many feet of pipe bursting, so many feet of flushing. Uh, so many feet of Cameron, uh, just so we can, um, we stay in our, uh, compliance with TCEQ with it. And then of course, we have the, uh, the, oh, one more, I'm sorry, one more. Street rehab phase five, uh, this project is currently under construction. Um, it looks like that it should be probably done by the end of September. Uh, this is pipe bursting project and what we do, uh, before streets department. Our public works goes in to rehab a street. Uh, we actually go through, camera the sewer mains, uh, see what type of shape they're in. And if they're deteriorated enough, we go ahead and we pipe burst and we change the lines out. Because we don't want to replace the street and come in a year, six months a year, even two years later. Dig the street up to go and change sewer main out because of failure. Okay, we're ready now. Uh, what we got coming up for the rest of this year? Uh, some of the, a- and this is speaking of just INI projects. Uh, West Calder, uh, we had had a sewer collapse on West Calder. And, uh, had in-house crews go out to make a repair. Uh, West Calder's concrete line, uh, the top was collapsed. We dug down, we made our, made our repair and like I said, the pipe is really extremely deteriorated. So we went ahead and put in to, uh, get this pipe burst. Uh, this, this project, it's currently out for bids right now. And then our sewer, sewer evaluation work of the contract, which is phase five. Oh, I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself somewhere here. I skipped one, I skipped East Lucas. The East Lucas rehab work, um, we have what's called East Lucas Interceptor. It's a large truck line that runs down to East Lucas. Uh, a lot of the problems and stuff you hear from on the north end is because of this line's surcharging. Uh, we're going to look at a project of going through and, uh, cleaning, televising the line. Making sure we don't see issues with that particular line. Uh, make sure that's not sludge it up to where we can get our optimal flow out of that line. And, uh, make any repairs that we see necessary. And then our sewer evaluation, the phase five. Um, this is also under design right now and should be put out to bid in April. Uh, basically this is just like the contract we have going now on phase four. It's smoke testing, it's Cameron, uh, cleaning and televising sewer mains. Uh, the only, this one has a little difference in it that we're actually going to do manhole inspections, inspections as well. So we could get us a list of manholes. And of course, that leads back up to manhole rehabilitation. Uh, we're looking at putting a contract out for manhole rehab. Uh, it should be coming out in May, uh, where we actually have manholes identified. They're deep, uh, they're on side of DD six ditches. They need attention, uh, they're a little more scope of work than what we can do in-house. So we're going to, like I said, put a contract out for these to get these lines or these manholes replaced. And trunk line inspection and cleaning, uh, that's another project that we should do, uh, before the end of the fiscal year. Uh, it's planned on being put out to bids probably, uh, July, maybe the end of June. Um, as we talked about the trunk lines, the trunk line surcharging, that's causing a lot of the backups. And a lot of the backups in the neighborhoods. Uh, this project will go through and we'll inspect the, uh, trunk lines to see how much sludge is in them. How much sediment's at the bottom, uh, the condition of the wall thickness, uh, make sure they're in good condition. And also, uh, mark out areas that maybe need to come in and have it cleaned and opened up. Yes, sir.
I'm assuming a lot of the trunk lines are older, so they're probably the concrete ones?
There's a, there's a lot of concrete trunk lines. However, back probably fifteen years ago, uh, they come through and did a lot of slip lining. Or they actually slid a, uh, HDP pipe inside of the concrete trunk line. Um, some of the issues that we run into with that, it actually downsizes the trunk line a little bit, so.
I'll wait because you may address my other question.
Okay. Uh, this is some of the, uh, additional, uh, CIP projects that we're looking at this year. And, uh, there's some on here that I'm, I'm not going to cover. I'm just want to cover some of the, uh, important ones that kind of lead to the INI problem. Uh, one of the things, the wastewater treatment plant generator and electrical improvements. Uh, if you guys remember back in, um, was it about a year ago, we had the fire at the wastewater plant. Uh, this particular project here, we're actually building an electrical building. And we're going to move all the electrical controls out of the, uh, raw sewage building or the headworks building. Uh, because it's such a corrosive environment inside of this building with the sewer gases, we're going to move this all outside. Um, Wall and Avenue C, lift station rehabilitation. Uh, this is going to rehab two of our major lift stations. Uh, these projects will probably be ready to bid mid-April. Uh, the Twenty-third Street, uh, sewer trunk line rehabilitation. Uh, we get a lot of, of the inflow around the Twenty-third Street area, Howe Street. Uh, that goes into that Twenty-third Street lift station. So we're wanting to rehab the, uh, trunk line that leaves there. It's a forty-eight inch concrete trunk line. And we're going to look at going through, cameraing it, uh, checking it for, uh, failures. And then we're going to rehab it to put it back in the optimal condition. And also, uh, the one, um, the engineers are kind of excited about. Is the assessment of the sewer collection system phase three. Uh, this project, when it's, uh, it'll be completed in May. Uh, so when it's completed, we'll have a full-scale sewer model. Uh, this will give us the ability to run different scenarios and what impacts it will have on the system. Uh, so this also will help us to identify problems area by, uh, you'll be able to run a scenario. And see what impacts it can show where there may be stoppages, where there may be failures. So. I thought you had a question.
Oh, I'm, I'm just, I'm making notes.
No, Councilman Fellshaw, he had a quick.
Yeah.
Question. Come to the next slide. So, uh, just in summary, you know, the major issue that we deal is, deal with is INI and our aging infrastructure. Um, like I said, that's what causes more issues than anything, especially during the heavy rains. Uh, we do have stoppages, uh, grease stoppages. Uh, we do run into the wipes in the system. These aren't necessarily major issues, they're pretty much just day-to-day problems that we run into. But when we get into the major issues, it's definitely the INI and the aging infrastructure. Uh, we utilize the in-house crews and contractors with cleaning and televising, smoke testing, dye testing techniques to identify these problem areas. Uh, Councilman Getz, you had asked about the plan, you know? That's the plan we do, that's what we go out, we try to locate these areas. We identify where the problems are and go through and pipe burst and replace and fix. Uh, we use pipe bursting as our main sewer line replacement method. Uh, this is done in-house and with contractors. Uh, by the end of our fiscal year, um, twenty-four, uh, we'll spend over six point eight million on combating, combating INI. And infrastructure rehab and replace. And, uh, we replace about one to one point two percent of our sewer mains each year. So kind of give you an idea, how long, how long it'll be before we get everything replaced. I mean, with the, uh, with rate we're going, it's usually one to one point two percent. Uh, we will be proposing in, in the upcoming CIP to become a little more aggressive in FY twenty-five. Uh, some of the things that we would probably be proposing, uh, is more pipe bursting and more smoke testing. Um, I've got my notes right here, I want to make sure I'm missing anything.
Same, Mike?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
You said we had about thirty percent of our current system is concrete?
Yes, sir.
And is that the one point two percent that we're replacing a year?
Yes, sir. The majority of what we replace is concrete.
So how many years are we looking at to replace all of that?
Well, exactly, twenty-five to thirty years at the rate we're going.
And limitations that we have on this is, uh, this is only able to be funded by our enterprise fund. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so.
That and grant money that we've, we've had in recent years. So we put a lot of A R P money towards sewer and water infrastructure.
So when people are concerned about other city council initiatives such as maybe a hotel or doing streets or something else, um, really we're talking about different pots of money. So there's, unless we, the bottom line is unless we increase our water rate significantly.
Correct.
You're not going to be able to do much more than you're doing now.
That's correct. So, um, some of the things we're, like I said, we're looking at being more aggressive at next year. We're going to start working on a, uh, smoke testing program in-house with some of the in-house crews. Uh, one of the things that we had talked about is our Terrell Park Lift Station, which is our, of course, like I said, it's our largest lift station in, in the city. Uh, we're looking at maybe doing some rehab work on it and also adding the fourth pump. Uh, it's got three pumps in it now and there is a slot for a fourth pump. So we may add a fourth pump in there for redundancy. And of course, uh, probably do some more rehabbing on some of the other lift stations is what we'd like to do. And maybe some more comprehensive, uh, studies of the lift stations to make sure that they're actually pumping at the capacity they're set for. Okay, one other thing I would like to go over is calling three-one-one. Just wanted the citizens to know exactly how calling three-one-one works. Uh, what the, I guess the kind of the, the flow is of the service request and the work orders. Uh, so once a citizen calls three-one-one, uh, three-one-one dispatch will take the information and they make a service request. Uh, the service request is then sent to water utilities. Uh, we get the, uh, service request, uh, through the city works program. Uh, it's given to an investigator and investigator will go out and investigate it to see if it's a city issue or a, uh, citizen's issue. If action's needed by city forces, if we realize it is a city issue, then a work order is created off of that service request. And that's what the crews work off of is the work orders. And of course, if no action is needed by the city, uh, then the service request is closed. And I have one more slide. Uh, just want to talk about C Click Fix. Uh, C Click Fix, you know, it's a, you can do online submitting of any of the, uh, issues you may be running into. The same thing, it's pretty much follows the same order. When you submit an issue online, uh, the, it automatically generates a service request. Uh, that service request is sent to us and is investigated. And of course, if no action from the city is needed, uh, the service request is then closed out. Uh, if the action is needed by city forces, then a work order is generated and put into the system.
That's something that citizen, that's something that citizens can do.
Yes, sir.
And are they notified when it's closed out if no action was needed by the city?
Yes, yes. We did have, uh, when it first come out, there was a hitch in it that, um, whenever the work order was generated, the service request was closed. And a lot of citizens would look up and see the service request closed, thinking that nothing was done. But we have since, it's been corrected to where it stays open until all the work's finished.
So one of my takeaways is, is clearly right now, before the system's replaced, we're looking at close to thirty years and then we're still going to have old system. It's just going to be older plastic system. But with the model, perhaps we can see where our hotspots are that are causing our biggest amount of problem because clearly I, I think, uh, I want to commend you and your department. I think you've brought it a long ways and this isn't a problem that happened in the last year or two. You know, it, this is deferred maintenance, for lack of a better use of terms. And, uh, it, but in terms of helping the paying customer out there that is having a bad experience, it can be a little overwhelming to say, well, hey, we're going to, this could be thirty years. But the, the other thing that we're looking at is with technology through the modeling, perhaps we'll be able to get where we can see the biggest amount of problem is being caused and.
We could find these areas sooner at, at a faster rate and get them repaired and get them rehabbed.
And you being in one of the lower areas of the city, that's just, uh, that's not a fix. I mean, it, we got to have capacity in order to be able to move it through.
Sure, yep.
And, and the life of PVC or H D P E, you know, i- is that, is that a little bit unknown because of the?
The life expectancy of H D P E, it's a little unknown because it's fairly new on the market. Um, it's probably been in, it's been used more in the gas industry, natural gas industry, uh, before it was in water, in wastewater, but, uh, it's a little unknown. Uh, PVC, um, I believe it's about fifty years, seventy-five years. So, or maybe a hundred, I, I shouldn't say because I'm not real sure. I, I don't remember that number, but it, it's, it's up there. And the thing is, uh, PVC wasn't actually started putting in the ground around this area till late seventies, early eighties. So the PVC pipe we have, relatively speaking, is fairly new, so.
We won't be on council. Aldwin may be. Well, I, I appreciate the work that you put into to get this information. I know Councilman Turner has. I, I would hope that maybe we can also get this on the website and somehow as a box so that it can explain to people and also explain to people too. Technology is certainly improving, being able to model this, perhaps we can find, uh, other ways to, to expedite the solution and, and to be aware of theirs.
And, and the thing, uh, to, to remember is we have crews out, we have contractors out every day that are out searching for inflow and infiltration, searching for these lines that are deteriorating so we can get them, get them on the schedule, so.
Thank you, Councilman Turner.
Uh, Mike, one thing I've learned since I've been in business and been on council, it's the difference when you inherit problems versus creating problems. So I, I just want to address that first and to staff, you know, often we step into roles, we inherit things, meaning you inherit the good, the bad and the ugly. I've experienced that with business, so I understand. Another thing that's a big frustration of mine is the thirty-nine point four percent altogether with the concrete and the unknown. You know, that's forty percent, that can be almost up to fifty percent of our infrastructure. You know, that's a huge concern of mine. And one thing to offset that concern, I know during the budget season, I understand this council wants to be conservative, but being conservative isn't always best when you cutting things that are need. And I'mma take a step further and, you know, we talked about grant consulting versus grant writing. One of the only ways I see we pay for this is either raise water fees or you can get grant funding. And we had opportunity to go out and seek a grant person on the staff. But again, we had a conservative mindset and that mindset cut opportunity to kind of put more of an emphasis and focus on the things we really need. And that's just what I want to stress to the decisions we make. When you look at the long-term decisions, is that the most beneficial thing for the time? Politically, it's great, but right now I feel like we put the city further behind with that mindset as a council as a whole because I think grant consultant versus somebody on staff dedicated to it, there's two different entities and things. Uh, another thing that concerned to mine is the C Click System. Uh, one thing about it is it's great that we have it, but I just don't want us to put on the grant, on the back burner how we actually marketing it. Uh, I think a lot of citizens may not know that this is a, a way of doing it. One thing I know I get often is if something backs up, the citizens don't follow this process. They immediately contact council. And one thing I've learned from being on the council through our city manager is when we go directly to him, he goes directly to you, these incidents in these areas aren't being properly recorded. So now when we go look at the areas that are the biggest problems and concerns, now it's not documented because the citizen went directly through us versus following the system. And I didn't understand it at first, but now when we look at the data, it's kind of hard to solve these problems in this high data-driven area if they're going directly to us and not following system in place to identify the problems. So I have learned that since I've been here. The last thing is, I'm really bothered by this. And a few years ago, we did a Corona consulting firm, where we bought in a consulting firm and they actually came in and gave us an assessment on what we need to do as a city to address our water issues. One of the things that I didn't hear is a directional flushing plan. And I know with a directional flushing plan, that's pretty much the, the engineering side. So I kind of want to update because this is one of the main things that they focus on, the storage, cleaning tanks, as well as directional flushing plan, pipe bursting. But we haven't really touched directional flushing plan. We flush, but we haven't really touched a directional flushing plan. So I know that's more on the engineering side, but I kind of wanted to know as a staff, as a city, that was one of the recommendations, one of the high recommendations. Is it a reason we haven't focused on directional flushing plan? We've asked a few times and I know it might be a strenuous job.
That's the water side now, not the sewer side. And the reason we haven't is because when Corona did that study, they laid out a, uh, prioritization of what to do first, what to do second, what to do third. So we're focusing to get the chlorine dioxide at the Pine Street Water Plant to remove the iron and manganese out of the system. And the directional flushing is after that to get the sediment cleared out of the district, the water distribution system. But until you quit putting more iron and manganese in, then you're not really accomplishing any lasting effects by the directional flushing. So that's why it's, it's later in the process. So the chlorine dioxide should go out for bid here fairly soon. We're at a hundred percent on the, on the plans. Um, and then once we get that in place at the water plant, then you'll see that directional flushing come after that.
Okay, so basically that's the third and, or that's the final step after we get to that point?
That's to get everything out of the system as much as possible that you've built up, you know, over the years.
Yeah, but yeah, my reason for asking, boy, like I'm just going off of what the consultants brought back and.
Right.
I think it's important we have these updates, but I just don't want us to kind of get all tasked with that, but those are some of.
Following the same plan.
Yeah, those are some of the things that were my concern based upon an assessment. I tried to listen and take the notes, but like I said, I truly understand the difference from creating and inheriting. And Mike, I appreciate you, like, the, the report was spot on, very informational. And I think it's important that maybe we can get a copy of this to share with citizens and community when they actually ask us questions, comments and have concerns, so thank you.
If I will, just to, to build on what you said there, Councilman Turner, um, three-one-one. It's so important for the citizens to call three-one-one. Um, even, I, a- and I know there are some citizens that will contact you through the city manager, to me, to my supervisor. I mean, that, it's, it's a long chain to get around to solve your problem. When you call three-one-one, the service request is made, the person that needs to see it sees it right then. Uh, the other thing is just like we talked about with the heat map, with the data. Three-one-one calls, we, we use that data to help pinpoint areas. And I know there's citizens that said before in the past, especially a lot of them with the, uh, the sewer surcharging where the line fills up and they can't flush. Well, I just quit calling because you're not doing anything. No, we still need you to call because we still use that data to make these heat maps, to see the areas we need to concentrate in. So I, I guess if I urge, urge any citizen, if you're having a problem, please call three-one-one. Uh, that way, because like I said, we, we use the data. It's just not, it's just not a place that we just get our, our work from and go on. There's reasons we, like I said, we use the data for it. And also to kind of go with the directional flushing, we do do some in-house directional flushing, uh, in areas that whenever, uh, whenever the situation calls for it, uh, meaning, uh, if we have extremely discolored water, we will go isolate a section of main and flush that main. Uh, I guess the, the, the difference is with the Corona, they're coming up putting together a plan for the entire city where we do actually just go out in certain areas whenever, like I said, wherever it's warranted and do the directional flushing. But like I said, that's probably the difference.
Can I say something? Yes, City Manager.
Thank you, Mike, excellent information, excellent presentation. It was right on spot, I think, what you were sharing with the council and, uh, the information and questions that the mayor and A J had, I think it was right on spot. Uh, when I got here, it didn't take me long to figure out that one of our biggest challenges, one of the largest challenges of Beaumont was the sewer system. Um, in particular, the collection system, as Mike talks about trunk lines and transmission lines and et cetera. Uh, it became evident that we had some challenges there. What's good to see though, that this council had dedicated dollars to start fixing on this. You, you could see the millions of dollars that you've, uh, budgeted and set aside for these, these type projects. So you are taking on this, um, challenge. Part of that though is execution, you know, we've got to be able to execute, you know? You could see the number of projects that's there that we need to do, we need to complete. We need to work on the I and I, we need to do a smoke testing. Those things kind of go hand in hand to fix the problem. You got to know where they are with smoke tests and et cetera. So, you know, I, our, uh, as a, as a staff is getting it executed, what you've identified and funded at this point. And, you know, sometimes it comes down to, do we have enough contractors in our area to do these jobs and to do the bidding, et cetera? So we've got to get aggressive to find contractors to come out and do this specialized type work. You know, to come in and camera our concrete line systems and, and clean grease out of, of systems, et cetera. So it's, it can be a long and arduous process, but once, once you identify some of those key problem areas, you'd be surprised how quickly things can pick up. But we've just got to be able to identify those key areas where this I and I and this infiltration is really happening to us, you know, it's a concrete line. I don't know, is it open manholes? It's a combination of all of it there, so we've got to work on it. I just encourage people to call three-one-one so we can know, you know? It helps to know when these problems are happening, when people can put on the dot and say, okay, we got a problem here, so it's stopping up here, so probably the problem's probably down here below. You know, not up here above. So it helps to be able to look at a dot, a map and say, these, uh, these calls are coming from and we can fix them right here. So it does, we'll do more on marketing that process, we'll do more on marketing three-one-one, we'll do more on marketing C Click, uh, that, that process. And, uh, we'll be, and during this next budget, we will look at what we can do to get more resources in this direction to work on this problem.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And I know, uh, going to neighborhood associations, Chief White does a good job of reminding people that, uh, we've done a great job of calling nine-one-one and oftentimes people are calling nine-one-one over non-essential, you know, emergencies and, uh, but clearly we can, uh, appreciate the effort to, for us to encourage the citizens and understand why they need to call three-one-one. So, uh, this time we'll be making, uh, comments, so we'll start with Councilman Samuel.
I'd just say thank you for the presentation. Uh, I know we've been doing a lot of work for a long time and a lot of people don't know that. Uh, so thanks for the presentation. And we have to continue to be diligent, uh, in our budgeting uh, because, uh, no one wants to hear about increase, but there. one wants to hear about increase, but there's always a time that we have to talk about, uh, how we're going to fund things. So, thank you.
Councilman Felsch.
Thank you, Mayor. Just remember that we're in the primary. Early voting started today and election day's May fifth, it's May fifth. I knew I was going to do that, March the fifth, March the fifth, Tuesday. Uh, but early voting did start today. And Keith, thank you for your service to the city. And, uh, please know you'll be missed.
Thank you, Keith.
Councilman Turner?
Keith, now I could take you out with me. But nah, uh, just wanted to shout out to CBV and, and me and Dave with Mural Fest, this event that this community's been pretty excited about. And I'm kind of looking forward to the outcome. Uh, just, maybe it might be soon that we kind of look into Mardi Gras and the, the deal and how it went and kind of look at the pros and cons with the, with the city and staff, you know, just looking at some of the outcome and some of the things. Uh, Rogers Park, we had a, a basketball net on my way in. Someone called me and said the net was down at Rogers. So, I just wanted to bring that up. And, you know, uh, from this situation with, you know, Councilman Duriel's area earlier, I just wanted to see if we can kind of look at any economic development incentives or, you know, especially those underprivileged areas and those areas that are kind of being forgotten about. Just, you know, the staff has them. Maybe we can refresh them, retool them, see if they're beneficial and see if they're actually being utilized. So, if we can look at some of those options, I would highly appreciate it. And I totally understood Councilman Duriel's concern with his ward earlier because, you know, often some of our older part of town do get forgotten about. And if we can look into ways to incentivize growth in those areas, I think it'd be beneficial for the city.
Councilman Duriel?
Thank you, Councilman Turner. Appreciate it. Uh, just a few things. Um, know, at some of the neighborhood meetings, uh, police department tells us about scams being ran on elderly folks. And that sound like what was happening to, uh, Mr. Johnson when he was up here earlier about his banking situation. Hopefully, somebody can get back with him or talk to him about that or update him if y'all have already done, uh, investigation on that. Also, um, on three-one-one system, I don't know if we have anything on our website that tells people exactly what three-one-one does. But it was just like Mike was saying, when you call three-one-one, it makes a record of it and, uh, and it shows trends. You know, if we get, keep getting calls about the same thing at the same area, then that makes us take a look at it. So, if we could put something on our website, explain to them exactly why it's good to call three-one-one. And not saying that you can't call council because you can't, you know, you can call us also. I tell my people, even if they do call me, to call three-one-one also. So, if we can give them information, tell them why that's important on our website, I think that'll be good. Also, uh, I want to thank those developers that came up here that showing an interest and wanted to do things in Beaumont. Uh, I think any type, most developments is, is good development. It's good for our neighborhoods and good for our ward. So, thank them and, and good luck in their, uh, in this process. And also, if I could, uh, maybe I could send an email or something, but I need, been getting a lot of questions about the, uh, the, uh, artificial turf at Sprott Park. Can I get an update on that timeline, uh, whenever y'all get a chance to? Because I think last they said it should be delivered at the end of February and we're almost there. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Duriel. Madam City Attorney?
Thank you. Well, first I want to publicly thank, um, All Saints Episcopal School for allowing me to speak or be a part of their speaker, uh, series for Black History Month. And then also to St. Anthony Basilica School for recognizing me as one of their honorees this month. And then to BISD and their RUR program for allowing me to read to all of kindergarten at Chautauqua Elementary. That was really fun. Um, and just lastly, it's always, um, been a privilege of mine to serve my community, but it's a blessing to be able to do it at home. So, I'm just thankful for those opportunities. Um, lastly, a lot of the neighborhood association meetings that I've had the privilege to attend have brought up a lot of their sewer issues. So, I know that this presentation will be helpful to them. And if we have an opportunity to post it on our website, um, a lot of the neighborhood association meeting presidents are encouraging citizens to, you know, utilize our city website more. Um, so that information will be beneficial to them as well, um, in asking those questions. And lastly, to my Keith, it has been a pleasure to bother you. And I look forward to bothering John just as much, but I hope you enjoy your retirement.
How so? I'd like to acknowledge Keith Folsom. You know, thanks Keith for what you've done for this city. You've done tremendously. Keith, in, in my thirty-plus years of city government, he's been one of the more solid directors I've ever met. He, he's honest with you. He's straightforward. He won't pull punches, but he's really effective in getting things done. I mean, he's totally effective. Uh, so thanks Keith. Enjoy your retirement. I know it's not going to last long, but enjoy it while it's there for sure. Okay. Good, thank you. I'd also like to thank and acknowledge the Black Men Read Program at our library. This was, it was a really good experience to go over and participate in that program. Uh, I know we saw the chief, but I had the opportunity to read for him too. So, I thank our library for that, but also our communications department that put those productions together. They came over and filmed that and talked us through that process. And so, we thank Lauren and her group and Paul and his group at the library for that. Uh, tomorrow, uh, Chief White and Fire, uh, MS Department's going to be on it at the Rotary Club. And I won't be able to be there because of some other things I have going on. But I just want to make sure we acknowledge Chief White and the Fire Department for that great honor. And, and I'm really proud of them for being acknowledged at that. And as far as projects and other serve, under-serv areas like that, that might be some things we can help, uh, developers like that get over the goal line without impacting another project. So, uh, we can start having those conversations with them sometime to get that done. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I know it's been a long meeting today and, uh, there's not many, uh, just residents left, most of it's staff. So, but certainly, uh, thank Mike Harris for the presentation today and being able to share that. And, and Keith Folsom, thank you for, uh, your commitment to the city and your service. And you will be missed. I've only been here a short time, but, uh, you do an incredible job and people always speak very highly of you. And with that, the, uh, council meeting is adjourned.